All the roll.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rocheberger.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of August 24th, 2022.
Move for approval, second.
Move the second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rocheberger.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Item A is an acceptance of a plat of easement for stormwater management purposes at 375 Second Street. This is a companion piece to a similar easement on item B for 1751 Berkeley Street and adjoining property for R&amp;L Carriers, a commercial trucking company that is improving these two parcels.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rocheberger.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item B, acceptance of a plat of easement for the stormwater management purposes at 1751 Berkeley Street. As I mentioned earlier, a companion parcel to the previous stormwater easement that was accepted by the council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rocheberger.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item C is Amendment Two to the Engineering Services Agreement with Donahue and Associates for the Electrical Engineering Services at both the Leo Nelson Riverside Water Treatment Plant and the Airlight Water Treatment Plant. On the city council's regular agenda, bid item number one is a $9 million initiative that is upgrading the complete electrical facilities at both of our water treatment plants. The city has previously hired Donahue and Associates to provide for the, for the planning and the construction oversight of those two issues. This $500,000 initiative will provide the work that will be beginning next year and is expected to take two years to complete.
Move approval?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Shaw.
Do you want questions now or when the bid comes up for questions regarding scope of the project?
I could, I could answer those questions now or we could do it during the bid, whatever your pleasure.
I'll ask the question now in that way, that way it'll give Eric a chance to think about and come back at seven o'clock, how about? My only question was, I saw we were putting in a bunch of electrical vehicle charging stations, or at least a single charging station, so I guess my question is, how much did that cost as a part of the overall package? And is that, how many vehicles are we looking to actually purchase that are electrical in nature and all that kind of stuff?
It's my understanding that as part of this electrical upgrade, it will be designing for components that will enable charging stations to be created. I don't believe that the final determination on that has been made, but what we're doing is planning to have the infrastructure to make those determinations.
Good, that's good enough.
Thank you.
Anything else? Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rocheberger.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
With your permission, Mayor, I am going to go off the reservation before we introduce item D and ask that one of the City of Elgin organization's quiet giants, Jeff Massey, its Chief Technology Officer, come up and join me at the podium. Chief Technology Officer for lay preestones like me is the person who's responsible for all things that plug in, use batteries, beep, but more importantly, depend on a digital network for everything that we do every day. I think it's pretty fair to say that when Jeff Massey was in high school going to his guidance counselor, the position, the role of a Chief Technology Officer back in the seventies, eighties, when we were coming into the workforce, it didn't exist. And I'll tell you, even today, the job description for a Chief Technology Officer continues to be a moving target. I don't think there's any technology leader over the past 20 years that has really had the same set of challenges, frustrations, or successes that continue for more than two years in a row. Jeff is walking away from the city after 24 years. Previous time spent serving in Skokie, he's a, he's a armed service, he's a former armed service employee. But what's particularly special for all of us with the organization, this is an example of a professional that literally doesn't exist any longer. Jeff's walking out the door, it's not unlikely that we're going to need three people to replace the work that he does on a daily basis. This is a person who came with an evolving industry that didn't exist and worked tirelessly every day to find the ways to provide us with the digital lives that we have now. Classic example is being able to turn on a dime and go completely remote and working during the pandemic because of all of the work that Jeff did in advance of that. Jeff has found ways to get rid of the use of paper in the organization from the very beginning. Open enrollment, which used to be an extremely paper-based process for, for getting the health services, has been completely automated and digitized. The cloud, as we all know about, Jeff was a leader at the forefront in migrating from all of the servers that he used to work on the, in the basement of the city. I've seen him countless times on his back changing network switches. And as much pride as he had in being the person to be able to maintain that on a daily basis, he was never afraid to move with where the technology was going and we were at the forefront in moving to the cloud as well. All of the inventory in the city is now, actually, what should I say? Everything that we own and manage has been inventoried by Jeff and he has workflows to manage it. So because of his work, we can go onto a computer, figure out where a fire hydrant is, where a street light is, and we have the ability, trees, we have the ability to manage all of that because of the grunt work that he put in, that he put in behind the scenes. Jeff is an incredible fiscal steward as well. I think when people think of technology, they think of people who want to spend on everything the best and brightest thing. Maybe I'm not the best example, but Jeff spends the city's money like his own and that means he doesn't spend it. I still contend to this day that Jeff is probably, single-handedly, one of the reasons that all of our software agreements are now license agreements. Jeff would buy software, he would use that software until ten, for 10 years or whatever. Microsoft never made money on the city and it's because of people like Jeff getting every last dime out of that, that they had to move to those subscription agreements that make sure that their revenue flows keep coming. But that fiscal stewardship is another hallmark of what exists in this organization and one of the reasons that we've been able to operate so effectively with such a lean staff and be able to continue to manage the city's expenses with those flat levies that we've become used to, particularly over the past five years. The city has become an example across the country on digital transformation and it's the work that this man did that set us on that path. Without question, there is no way that we would be where we are today without this guy. Jeff, I'm gonna miss you.
Rick's always been one of my mentors for as long as I've been here and my, my close advisor and I appreciate everything he's ever done. And the city council, mayor and council members, because I've been blessed with having council members who, I'm gonna say, maybe not understand everything, but have always been agreeable and, and progressive in the city's deployment of technology. I've never had to fight to get something done. And, and just to follow up, the, the one thing I'm probably the proudest of that I've done was the 2003 conversion to voice over IP. I will say conservatively, that project has saved the city $15 million in communication costs over the last 19 years. And, and we were well ahead of the curve in, in voice over IP and I, I think is one of my, my favorite accomplishments of getting done. So, and as Rick said, I'm, I'm, I believe in, in using, you know, taxpayers' money wisely. One of the things I like about Elgin and being here in Elgin is it is a, a very well-run city. I've been honored to work here, my, my colleagues in the other departments, department heads are absolutely fantastic people. The people of Elgin don't really, I think, maybe don't know, don't understand how fortunate they are to have the staff that we have here. It's been a wonderful career and I've been honored to work here. Looking forward to my future, more time with the grandkids and, and just being out in the world. Hopefully to stay involved in, in technology in the future. But thank you so much, very much for, for a wonderful career here with the City of Elgin.
Before you go, Jeff, as, as public employees, we don't have the ability to buy gold watches, send you off on a cruise or anything like that. A little bit later, the mayor will be awarding a key to the city, but we thought it would be a little bit more appropriate if we gave you a password to the city. No duplication and this one never expires. You're always welcome.
Do you mind chiming?
Yeah, no.
You're just, just.
Jeff, you're not done.
Just being.
You're not done. Somebody in the technology industry knows something.
Yeah, I mean, like, Rick, Rick underestimates, you know, maybe, in my viewpoint, being in technology in a large organization, I mean, you just don't people, find people like Jeff. You know, I, I was just listing out the different domains and technology areas that Jeff oversees and, and all of those in my company are all separate directors and senior managers that oversee those different areas. And yes, there might be more going on in each of those domains, but just having that cross-domain knowledge of all the things you do is just impressive. I mean, everything from having to know and lay down fiber and how to do it the right way and having the vision to do that, to build out a network in our community, to how, how you've just laid everything out, it's just, hats off to you. That's a real accomplishment for an organization like ours to have someone like you. And when you say we have good people in our, in our department heads, you are one of those, Jeff. I mean, I, I, I mean, I read through those agreements. I understand them maybe a little bit more than some of my peers in that specific area, but I, I've been impressed with what you've done and how you've advanced things. That, that's kudos to you. I think whoever takes your position is gonna be able to ride on that foundation and do good things, but it's not without a lot of hard work and hands-on that you've been able to do because it's not just leadership that you provided in that area, but it's that hands-on technical skill as well. Being able to jump into all those different things, just amazing. So hats off to you. They don't make people like you anymore in the industry, they just don't. So kudos to you.
Item D is the Community Task Force on Policing's report of its findings and recommendations. This evening, members of the Community Task Force on Policing will be presenting. As I said, the report of findings and recommendations first submitted to the city council on September 1st. Chairperson Horton, are you going to be the one to introduce the proceedings? Excuse, I mean, where, I know, sorry. Who's gonna be introducing the, the proceedings this evening? Shimon, I know, excuse me, I'm sorry, Shimon. Ready to come up to the podium?
Sure.
Thanks.
I want to congratulate the task force on completing by September 1st. And I know it was a struggle, I know how difficult the conversations can be, been down that road and done that, and you did a great job. And looking forward to hearing what your presentation is tonight for the community. Don't expect a decision tonight because this has to go back through a process. It has to go back to staff for review. Mr. Cogley has to look at the legal portions and they have to rewrite it into the form of a memo that will come back to the council as a, a part of an ordinance. And that is important for us to, to finish. One other thing, I'll be asking for a break at seven o'clock. So we'll, not that you have to finish, but I'll be asking for a break at that time, you can catch your breath. But we have other business and a short, relatively short, regular council agenda that we'll go through. And some proclamations to do, so, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Thanks for taking the time to listen to us and hear from us. I'll be presenting on the City of Elgin Community Task Force on Policing. I'll be showing the recommendations from, well, I'll go with the overall task force and then we'll have different task force members depending on the subcommittee. They will be presenting on those particular set of recommendations. The task force was formed by council ordinance in September of 2021. Eighteen members appointed, two EXO official members, city council. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. City council member Powell and so was city council member Toby Shaw were the two EXO officials. Their age range was between 24 and 76. They had nine African-American, five white, three Latinx, three, I'm sorry, one American, Asian, Alaska native, sorry, that made up the task force as a whole. The gender breakdown was ten males, eight females, and all over the city of Elgin. We have 16 official pool task force member meetings, 44 subcommittee meetings. The subcommittees that were former official and other profile, profiling disparities, which will present on civil review board, the civilian review board, the allocation of EPD resources, training, hiring, and recruitment, retention, and promotion, subcommittee as well. The additional formal meetings of the EPD, we had two committee business sessions that some of the members were able to attend. I attended one myself and some of the other task force members. And we sit down with the EPD, talking to get to know each other, it was real beneficial for us as well. The chair was re-elected, was Jewel Krigler, and she served as chair to June 2022. And then Charles Harden was the elected chair to take over from July to August of 2022. And the vice chair is Ismael Krigova. I was the spokesperson from June to August and Walter served through May. And Walter is part of the parliamentary. The racial disparities and other recommendations will be presented this evening by Mr. Corey of Dallas. He'll be helping to present those recommendations.
This particular subcommittee was one of the possibly the tough one because you're talking about recommending things that we thought that would help aid police, police officer from basically having bias or discrimination because of person, race, color, creed, sex, national origin. So some of the things that we're recommending for the council is we draft, that we should draft and pass an ordinance that ban minor moving vehicle infraction. That's the sole reason for a vehicle stop. This ordinance should not inhibit Elgin police officer capacity to stop a vehicle for a traffic or moving violation. Or prohibit calls, infraction that should be prohibited, a sole reason for the stop, including driving a vehicle with a registration expiration within 60 days of the expiration date. And, and this is very important because there's some personal experience. I got stopped and the state said I had another 30 days. However, police officer said, that the city ordinance said that he could give me a ticket, but he gave me a warning. So it's very important that, you know, we kind of relate with what the state is doing, specifically when they extend the expiration of, of these particular dates. Displayed a license plate, a registration tag in manners that is violation, yet remain clearly visible. Broken license plate light, a single broken or non-functioning tail light if the other light is functioning. Object dangling from, object dangling from the rearview mirror. The ordinance should be drafted with input with the Elgin Police Department, particularly with regard to the clarification, any of these prohibition of spec, specification of any exception to these prohib, prohibition. In addition, the EPD should make any necessary amendment to the EPD standard operating procedure to ensure accountability related to the proper enforcement of this ordinance. And I hope you guys kind of understand, you kind of get a background in this, that many of these specifically people, color, are basically stopped with some of these things. And also you see in here the chief, some of the things that she said, some of the things that we, we have done in the background. Do I need to go over the background of all of this, you know? Do I need to do that? I can, okay, I will. The background, this recommendation stemmed from the effort to address the racial disparity in the stop made by the Elgin Police Department according to the data shared with the state of Illinois. Black was between four and five times more likely to be stopped than white Elgin citizens. Practice and other police department, this recommendation is based in part in an executive order approved by the Philadelphia, Pennsylvania known as Driving Equity Policy. It reads in part, it is the city policy that officers of the Philadelphia Police Department shall not initiate motor vehicle stop based on violation that does not create a significant risk or immediate danger. And this is chief, she, she responded to this. Chief Annie Lally told the task force that she did not agree with this recommendation. She indicated that, and understood that many layers of the issue raised by this recommendation and that the EPD clearly defined discriminatory profiling through written directive and expressly prohibited to practice. She went on to describe her concern that if such an ordinance was enacted in Elgin, it would not extend to other law enforcement agencies within jurisdiction of Elgin, like the state police officers in the Kane County Sheriff. And contradicting enforcement of these offenses could potentially create confusion for citizens. She also indicated that these stops, those that would be banned under proposed ordinance can be valued, liable to for the officer. In particular, she noted that some off. Stop for these minor offenses have resulted in firearms recovery. She also discussed a lawsuit filed by the Philadelphia chapter, a paternal order of police to block the city policies. Community feedback, community members who addressed the recommendation was supported, called for greater police focus on more serious crime. The outcome, this recommendation was approved by a task force, 13, 13 voted in favor, two against, and zero extending. Recommendation, the City Elgin Council should direct the EPD, in addition to the current programming that engages the community, create a set of bi-annual ongoing dialogue with officers and community members focused on reducing and eliminating racial profile. Specifically, these dialogues on reducing disparities in policy should facilitate a voluntary consultant individual or team to select with input from the community. The facilitators should maintain a clarity of purpose and maintain ground rules for civility and equal balance of speaking opportunities during the dialogue. B, including update the EPD leadership of its effort to track and reduce, eliminate bias and disparity in stops specifically in the policy in general. Provide officers with the opportunity to listen to community members regarding their experience of being stopped, while also officers the opportunity to discuss and respond to that particular stop. The dialogue should include opportunity for police and community to acknowledge painful past experience and history in histories in a manner consistent with truth and reconciliation effort, while exploring ways to continue to build trust among police and community. This program should be held on a neutral location that is not, that not within the EPD Police Department. With, with location both east and west side of the Fox River, virtually opposite and recording should be offered to community members. Likewise, if translating is requested, the city EPD should provide it. Background on this, the recommendation stemmed in part productivity with well-received dialogue that occurred between members of the task force in the Elgin Police Department independently of their formal meeting. I note such dialogue between office and community members occurred and occurred frequently both before formation of the task force and in the present days. This was one of the things that, you know, I came up with when I was here with the city. We did this in the central neighborhood area, which is, at that particular time was Fremont, Gifford, Hickory area and was very successful when we had the police along with Chief Gruber approve this and was very effective and with, with communication and community relations with the community. So, and you can see that, it will say that chief, that's one of the things she was a highlight. And some of our task force members did communicate with the police during this, trying to get an idea of what police officers go through, to try to, try to empathize and be in their shoes. That's one of the things that the ordinance said too, I was reading the ordinance over again. One of the things the ordinance said is we should, the task force should foster these type of, of programs, of these type of communications, so, and these type of policies. So we, we, I hope that, I hope that we, we really, you know, enact that. And I think that's a policy that the chief is willing to do. Practice in other community, these kind of dialogues regularly occur in community across the nation. Recent examples include Los Angeles, Milwaukee, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Austin, Texas, and Chicago. One study published in the journal Policy found that following participation in these dialogue events, community members reported a strong voice through working with police officers and their enhanced understanding of community members' issues. Similarly, levels of trust and mutual respect were strong following participation in event. Finally, community members empathize for, for officers was found to be strong after the dialogue, expressed through the increased awareness of the challenges faced by officers and how police officers feel. On the other side, following participation in dialogue event, police officers also reported appreciating the voice of the community more, as well as higher level of mutual respect and trust in the community. Finally, similar, similar to the community members, officers express strong empathy following the event through awareness and challenging faced by citizens and how community members feel. Chief Lally praised this recommendation noting that the dialogue between EPD officers and the task force represented, in her opinion, is the high, the highlight of the task force's work. Community feedback, there was some support among listening session attendees of this recommendation. This, by the task force, it was approved in a consens, consensual, in a consensual vote. Recommendation, the City of Elgin takes steps to reduce the impact of disproportionate stops, particularly those that result in fines and other costs on Elgin resident within the preview, preview or the City of Elgin and state laws. These steps should include reducing and eliminating fines, fees that escalate costs of minor infraction to levy of several hardship, specifically reducing impound fee that compound over time of court fee once a year. Remember when I was out in the park one year at Wing Park? And we had several African-American young men and women that were stopped because they said the music was loud and their car was impounded. No warning, nothing else. Their car was impounded and they paid about $500 or $600 to get their cars off some they could afford. Ford did it. So this, this is something I hope the council really look at and really, you know, look at the law and what we can maybe do with these particular fines and these stops that may not even be worth stopping. Opportunities for residents have an alternative to payment to provide such alternative, particularly such as volunteering at specific community event or in the support of other City of Elgin activities. Alternative should be clearly communicated to the resident at the point defined and imposed, that residents are aware of these options, either verbally by the officer or printed on the citation. on the citation. Background, in effort to alleviate the burdens of the fine created for low-income Elginites, the task force also recommended that the payment plan, a payment option, be offered to reduce the fear of person case being routed to a collection agency. The task force also added a one-year term for compounding fee. Task force members brought up the practice of levying, compounding fines often start a series of event that can dramatically affect the life of minority community assumed to have low income. For example, the inability to pay the fine immediately make a situation worse as late fee occurred. The vehicle may be impounded, then the individual family lose his transportation to work, resort in loss of job, excess debt, and other extreme financial hardship, thus minor infraction and resort in a life-altering crisis and make somebody want to burglarize one of our homes. That's not in there. That's just something I said. Practice in other department. Well, you know, in my later life, I really want to stand up for me, but I see I'm not having y'all to laugh at all, so. Practice in other department. The police executive resource form in November twenty twenty-two Article Oregon, the role of police to protect the public and the work of the local community to resolve problems of crime and disorder. Note to arrest resident with a sore system, fine and penalty, mostly extremely minor offenses. This type of policy is not what officers want to be doing. They're not officers that want to be doing this. Young men and women become police officers because they want to serve their community and protect them, not because they want to arrest the people they are charged with serving. In many community, good police officers are caught up in a bad system. It cites examples from several hundred cities across the country, with the majority in the South and Midwest, where we stay at, but other clustered outside New York City and Washington DC. The president task force on Twenty-First Century Policing also found that at the local level, cities across the country generate much of their revenues through court fines and fees, with those who can't pay subject to arrest and jail time. These debtors, prisons are found in cities like Ferguson, where the number of arrests warrant in twenty thirteen with thirty-three thousand exceed its population of twenty-one thousand. Most of the warrant was for driving violations. Community feedback. Community members, listening session did not force strong opinion on this matter, through some objection to the task force involvement in determining fines. The department, but you know, we just only recommending, you all got to do this. The department, the department support this. Thank you, department, for supporting us. Recommendation, the city of, the city of Elgin Police Department and school district U forty-six incorporate community leaders as liaison as expect regarding contact with police, family, school, allowing to work together, not to be used as agent of discipline, which the chief have explained is that, that she have, you know, directed her community safety officers not to, not to be a part of the discipline, only when there's a crime committed. So, we thank you, chief, for that. Up to four community leaders have diverse background. Community leaders encouraged to utilize the other supportive agents within the community. Community leaders will also be encouraged to aid in directing those formerly incarcerated and resetting in Elgin, resettling in Elgin. Community leaders liaison should be compensated. Chief Lally would determine the hiring process of community leader liaison. Several task force members expressed concerns in the background over the perception that a disproportionate number of minority student, black and Hispanic, in particular, are detained by school resource officer. In this other recommendation, the task force recommend additional steps to be taken to improve relation between schools of resource officers and the school and students they serve. After some discussions, task force members agreed that the community liaison position should be paid role in that entity, in that entity, as the city council, EPD, U forty-six should have the power to hire this position. Practice in other cities. The president task force on Twenty-First Century Policing recommend law enforcement agency and school should establish memorandum of agreement for the placement of school resource officers that limit police involvement in student discipline. Such agreement could include provision for special trained in school resource officers to help them better understand, deal with issues involving youth. The police executive resource form note, several jurisdiction, Montgomery County, Maryland, Oakland, San Francisco, and Washington DC among them, was political leaders have either taken SOR completely out of the school or dramatically scaled back their operation. Chief adds, as the town hall emphasis, the SROs not only can help interrupt violent crime and progress inside our school, they can also, they can also help prevent crime from spilling over between school and community. I saw the firsthand in Chicago with the P E R F brought together, school participant and district commanders, to increase communication and help prevent gang conflict that started over the weekend in the neighborhood from escalating in the schools. The SROs are critically important resource in police effort to combat both school and neighborhood crime. And the P E R F, the P E F R F, the P E R F will be paying close attention to in the coming weeks and months. International Association of Chiefs of Police also cited school resource officer practice in specific cities. Examples of very successful SRO program is Wakefield, Massachusetts Police Department. The W B D and three officers assigned to the three different level of school in the area. Each officer's work on liaison between the school administration and the teachers, the students and their family. They run education program, help ensure a safe school environment, and act as a positive role models for the student. Each of the officers does their three main roles with pride. Educators, law enforcement officers, inform counselors, mentors, and Wakefield Police Department, SROs have a great collaborative relationship with administration and the teachers and the kids, which shows how effective an SRO program can be increasing in the community and the trust in the police department. You know, I think we already doing this, so, you know, which is good, but we can improve on the. Community feedback. Some members of the community did, did agree that the school resource officers role should change and be less disciplinary, which I think we're going to say this in there. Chief Lally stated that she did not agree with the recommendation to phrase out the use of community school resource officer. She stated that U forty-six district choose to not engage or not have a contract with school resource officer, that's a district decision, but because the district is requesting the Elgin Police Department service, the department planned to have officers in the school. The goal of the school resource office is to provide safety, security, guidance, counseling, and mentoring. The chief indicated that the SROs are not involved in any type of disciplinary measure. There is any, if there's any criminal action, the police is involved. She indicated the department typically would divert students to either department youth empowerment program counseling. She agreed with the remainder of the recommendation on the school resource officers. As I was reading this, you know, one thing that we need to look at too, in the school resource officers, is how many, how many administrators are saying that some of the kids are in criminal action so they can get the police involved? You know, you've got a lot of bias within school. You know, I'm a part of U forty-six, I know it's changed since over thirty, forty years since I've been there, but, you know, there were some problems there too. I was in the first, one of the first racial riots that was at Elgin High, and I think after that had about six or seven more. However, I think that we need to really look at this and see just how many crimes, criminal activities happening, and hopefully that our SORs can be very perceptive, and I think that what chief is telling us they are, that they are trying to more or less mentor and help the kids when they see them going wrong into a criminal element. So, I think that that is great, you know. Recommendation, with outcome, we did vote eleven oh for this particular recommendation. Recommended, oh, I'm not, that's not my answer. Okay, I'm finished. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Plaidler? Any comments this time? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon's got a question.
Yep, thank you. I just have a general question when it comes to the, all of the recommendations for the task force. Is there one list compiled with all of the recommendations listed? And is the plan to provide that to everyone so we can see them in written form?
The report that was submitted. It's in the report.
Oh, okay, but the presentation and all of that, so.
Look, we have a report that was submitted, and for us presenting the recommendation, we presented our recommendation to you tonight.
So, the, the presentation here.
Logistically, this is the email that Rick had sent out with the two attachments. There's a PowerPoint deck that has a little bit of-
Oh, I missed the PowerPoint.
And then this is the, this is the Word document that has the verbatim of what we're kind of going, that they're going through tonight so far.
I got that one. I'm talking about the, the presentation itself. Okay, I missed this attachment. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that should have been in that same email. Well, it might have been revised, though. The, the full, the full description, though, is in, is in that deck that was there, and that's not been amended, I don't believe. Correct?
If, I, I think perhaps council member would have, we had to send a second version of the report because there was some miscues with that, so you probably pulled the report from the last email, and the PowerPoint was on the first one with the incorrect version of the task force report. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Yep, no problem.
Anything else?
One thing I would like to say, I'm a real man.
Could you come to the mic so that people that are watching can hear? Thank you.
One thing that, when you talk about racial profiling, that was one of the things that the chief and I discussed along with, you know, deputy chief, we discussed the discretion that a police officer had. A police officer have a lot of discretion. So, one of the things that we, you know, I think that these community meetings would really help the community getting familiar with police officers and police officers getting, you know, familiar with the community. So, you know, maybe once they approach a person, they can kind of let them know exactly what they did, how they did it, or what happened, what kind of infraction it was, because the police officers do have a lot of discretion. And really, I don't know how to deal with that, to keep, you know, when you say my discretion, they have a lot of discretion. So, we, that was one thing we did discuss, just for your information.
Anything else? Okay, next speaker.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share-
Do you share your name with everybody so that people-
Yes, my name is Aubrey Flickema, and I am going to be representing on behalf of the subcommittee related to training, frequent hiring, retention, and promotion. In other words, the committee with the very long name, as we like to put it, so. So, I'm going to go through each of the recommendations, provide a little bit of background, and then I'm happy to circle back on the report if there's anything or any specific questions that anybody has. So, our first recommendation is related to education. The recommendation is to change the educational requirement to take the entrance exam to a high school and/or GED. So, that's again to take, in order to take the entrance exam, we're recommending that the educational requirement be changed to having a high school diploma or a GED. Some of the background behind, what the intention was behind going through that was that our desire was to offer a wider spectrum and a more diverse pool for the Elgin Police Department to hire from, and offer more opportunities for a greater, a greater percentage of the population in Elgin to be able to serve as police officers in our community. Along, kind of coupled with that, that as a separate recommendation, we are recommending that hiring preferences be included in the hiring process, and so the recommendation is to develop a point system for police hiring. That point system, we do have a recommendation that includes what we believe that point system should look like, and that is included in the report, in the report that was submitted. And so, I'm happy to go through some of that, but for the sake of time, I'm going to go all the way through all the recommendations, and if anyone wants me to circle back with that, I'm happy to do that.
The, the presentation slides have not been progressing as, as you guys have been going through. There's another, could you go to the next?
Am I supposed to do that?
Yes.
Sorry. There we go. Okay.
So that as you're going through these, we can see them, you know, see the bullet points, and then folks at home can see the bullet points, because I think that was missing last time, too.
Okay.
So that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yep. The next recommendation is to update the police entrance exam. So, what really the subcommittee looked at was this need to look at the entrance exam, figure out, you know, are there any biases present, is there anything that needs to be updated in it? And so, the recommendation is to update that police entrance exam with those things in mind. The next recommendation is related to compensation, or the next two of them, really. And the first recommendation in line with compensation is to create a salary incentive in conjunction with the police contract negotiation process for, I believe it's either residency within the city of Elgin and/or off-duty community engagement or volunteerism. And then, the second recommendation as relates to compensation is to increase the incentive for police officers that are fluent in any language other than English to be increased from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars a month. And then, the last recommendation is on training, and it is to continue to pursue nonviolent and conflict transformation training. The Elgin Police Department to continue a reduction in use of force with an included focus on social dominance slash power dynamics. Those are the recommendations coming from the subcommittee. Are there any questions?
Thank you all for your time, this whole duration. I don't want to go on, but you put in a lot of work. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you for the presentation. One of the issues that came to my mind and was reinforced during the public input sessions was circling around associates' degrees as it relates to the GED high school diploma. So, I was just curious, not that I'm going one way or the other, but how was that item considered before and after the input session?
So, before and after the input session, unfortunately, I could not speak personally to how it was considered after the input session. I was sick, and so I wasn't able to attend some of those meetings. If anybody else from the task force who is here would like to explain. But I know that the conversation prior was that there is still definitely a priority and a concern for including some of those degrees into, we want our Elgin police officers to be educated, and that's where some of those preference points come in. That, you know, we're using the preference points, preference point system to be able to get some of those highly educated people in, but also to create a wider pool to recruit a more diverse recruiting base. So, and again, if someone would like to chime in with how that was addressed after the community sessions, I'm, you know, happy to step aside.
Thank you.
You know, I'm just looking, we had some discussion many, many months ago about the- You know, I'm just looking, we had some discussion many, many months ago about the addition of young people with a high school diploma and being able to apply for membership in the police department. Would you like to comment on that and what's your discussion, if you can remember what that was and how you kind of addressed that? I know that people thought, well, we're going to, they're not educated and they have many things. How is that, how is that going to be improved if we bring high school graduates? How will the police department be able to provide training for them? Is there additional training that anybody discussed for those young people?
So again, I think that's where the preference points come in, is that we are looking at the preference points to kind of sort some of that. But that's where we're really, what we're looking at is the police department does offer, our Elgin Police Department does have a robust training program. So we're looking at that, relying on that. And then we're also looking at that last recommendation specifically related to, to continue pursuing that nonviolent and conflict transformation training within the police department. Again, you know, we do recognize that they may be younger, they may have a little bit less, you know, life experience. And so getting them into some more of those trainings was discussed. That said, I know there was a robust discussion in the, in the subcommittees and then also on the task force regarding some of that where it referred to a life experience. You know, we're not necessarily envisioning that we're going to be bringing in necessarily, realistically, there will be younger people, but the intention behind it is that we would also be looking at the life experience of somebody maybe who has been involved in their community and who has, you know, done some of that life work that wasn't in the traditional venue of graduating high school, applying for college, attending a college, and, you know, graduating and then applying for jobs. And so we're really trying to be, to honor some of that other really valuable experience and include that into, you know, we're trying to say we think that experience is good, too. And so.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else? Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Aubrey. One of, I just want to give some background. I know she spoke specifically about the preference point system that is being proposed as part of this. And it's a good balance, just like you said, of trying to recognize folks that have community experience and leadership skills but may not necessarily have a bachelor's degree. So none of this, you know, prevents people from being able to take the test. There are so many different layers of the selection process. So what I think the task force was trying to do is to remove as many barriers as possible from allowing people to be able to at least take the test. And then once people take the test and based on what their score is, they get additional preference points depending on life experience, education, military background, all types of different things. And as the mayor referred, you know, referenced, we did look at this probably well over a year ago.
Yeah.
When it was brought to us by the police department. And since we were so close to convening the task force, we thought it would be a good idea for the task force to kind of weigh in on this. And quite frankly, what the task force came up with doesn't differ probably a whole lot from what the police department and Chief Lally and her team originally brought forward to us. But I think at least going through the process and having the task force take a look at it and weigh in on it has been very helpful, and it reinforces what Chief Lally had brought forward initially. So really appreciate all of your work, obviously, but I think this in particular is of special note because of the ongoing challenges of, of hiring police officers, not just in Elgin, but it's just, it's a, it's a, it's an issue across the country. So in order for us to continue to be competitive and continue to attract the best and the brightest to our community, I think what the task force has come up with will, will help us continue to do that. So thank you.
And I will add to that, in addition to all of that, something that was a conversation at tables frequently was the desire to hire Elgin residents. We want the Elgin Police Department to be represented as residents of Elgin who are living here, who have a vested interest here, whose kids go to school here. And we really felt like we needed to look at some of those preference points, look at some of those educational requirements. And that's what we mean by when we're trying to open up the pool, trying to open up the pool to our community. You know, we really want, we believe, and the Elgin Police Department believes, and Chief Lally believes, that, you know, it, everyone here does better when the, when the people who are presenting the police department, who are working for the police department, know our community and know our citizens. And so that, that was a big part of the conversation as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll take a, about a seven-minute break, and we'll reconvene at the, for the regular council meeting at 7:05.
So moved. Do we need a motion?
Yep. Second? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved. Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes. Whoop. Let's find your seats, please.
Why Anthony hit the big one?
Okay, we'll call the regular meeting for the Elgin City Council for September 14th, 2022 to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Present.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of a minutes of the previous meeting of August 24th, 2022. Second? Moved and second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. We have a couple of proclamations this evening with the representatives or the family of Jane Barbosa. Hit us up at the podium. Ms. Martinez, you? Whereas Juanita Jane Barbosa was born on October 22nd, 1945, in San Luis Potosi, Mexico. She arrived in 1947 to the United States with her family and began her life in Elgin in 1957, attending St. Joseph Catholic School and then St. Edward's Catholic High School. And whereas Jane began her career at Chicago Rawhide in 1985 and moving into administration at Elgin Community College, focusing on registration and keeping data for the state, in 1986, Jane went instrumental in helping ECC become one of the two colleges to receive the Immigration Reform and Control Act or Amnesty Grant. And she was, she was devoted to her work at Centro de Informacion in employment counseling, immigration, and English as a second language. She rounded her career out as a real estate agent, helping many in the Latino community secure their first homes. And whereas Jane is recognized often for her contributions to ECC's multicultural student affairs by founding the Organization of Latin American Students, OLAS, heading the graduation celebration for Latina girls at ECC, in addition to initiating the Hispanic Heritage Month Breakfast and hosting a visit from world-renowned labor leader and activist Cesar Chavez. And whereas Jane will be remembered for her countless hours of devoted volunteering to the Elgin community, where she was a passionate parishioner at St. Joseph's, St. Joseph Church, an active advocate at Elgin Senior Center, and creating a space in the Elgin community where Latinos and Latin Americans felt empowered. And now therefore I, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby ask the citizens of Elgin to remember and honor Juanita Jane Barbosa for her lifelong kindness, prolific volunteerism, and passionate commitment to the Elgin Latino community's political, humanitarian, educational, and social causes, and to declare September 16th,
Just thank you to the City of Elgin, to Mayor Captain, to all the council members for this wonderful recognition and the proclamation. It's a very special day for us, for our family. My mom, as you know, loved Elgin very much. This was her home. As proud as she was of her roots and her home country of Mexico, she's very proud of Elgin. And wherever she went, she would run into people who knew of her, and it was a connection between Jane and Elgin. And it was very emotional, but thank you all very much. Thank you. This is a special day for us.
Just to add to Melissa's comments, this is honestly a.
Just to add to Melissa's comments, this is honestly a true story. After I retired from the post office, I went to Puerto Rico. I always wanted to go to La Isla del Encanto. And so I was there, and there was a family reunion, and people realized I was from Elgin. And the first thing they were asking is, "Do you know Jane Barbosa?" And I'm like, "Wow." So, thank you.
Okay, Jaime Garcia, would you please come on? Whereas after a distinguished and illustrious career of fifty years at Centro de Informacion, Executive Director Jaime Garcia retired on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas Jaime Garcia was a founding member of Centro de Informacion in nineteen seventy-two, a group created and based on a need for bilingual workers to help Spanish-speaking immigrants become established and successful in this new country's society, Jaime was honored with the two thousand and fifteen Community Impact Award by the Neighborhood Housing Services of Chicago for his unwavering dedication and commitment to the community. And whereas Jaime Garcia helped to establish and grow Centro de Informacion from a part-time, non-for-profit group into what is now three locations with sixteen paid staff members and a budget of more than one million dollars. Jaime aided in creating and successfully running many programs and events through Centro. These events included back-to-school services, life and parenting skills, and financial literacy. Centro is still the primary Hispanic social service group for the Kane County area. And whereas Jaime Garcia has helped over one hundred and fifty thousand individuals through Centro de Informacion in its fifteen years as Executive Directors, and many, many more in the thirty-five years of prior dedication, serving in the role of devoted board member and volunteer, Jaime has helped shape and expand the direction of Centro's services to the community, resulting in creating a place for all Latino Americans to receive the support needed to harmonize their lives with confidence. Now therefore I, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby recognize and honor Jaime Garcia for his continual community outreach, powerful volunteerism, and educational leadership to Centro de Informacion and the Elgin community on the occasion of his retirement in two thousand and twenty-two. May I say a couple words?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to say that, you know, I was just a catalyst. There were so many, many other people that have had a hand in Centro de Informacion throughout his fifty years, and I was just but one of the many workers. And all I know is that I, as an immigrant myself, I was brought here when I was nine years old. So I know what it means to come to a different country, learning to speak a different language and different customs and a different way of life. And therefore, you know, I felt that calling, that to be able to, on my own, as an adult, be a spark, a catalyst, to be able to make this country, this city, a better place to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're not quite done yet. We're not quite done. Sure. You know, Jaime's fifty years of service changed the face of this city. Our city now is fifty percent Latino and Spanish-speaking. And many of them, I don't know how the math works out, he brought a hundred and fifty thousand people here, but I don't know how that quite works out, but I guess over fifty years, that's a long time. And people moved on to other communities. Jaime not only represents the City of Elgin, but Carpenter'sville and other communities around us. And it's very special. He opened doors in this area for many, many people and gave them the basic things that they needed to become citizens in the United States. He worked with them to create citizens. He worked with them to get through the day-to-day issues that a community has. When the new director took space, I said, "You know, one of the things, we have people coming all the time. They don't even know what day their trash has to go out." And those little things that make life important. So in honor of Jaime's work for fifty years and the fact that he's helped so many doors be opened, I have a gift for him. It's a key to the City of Elgin. These are very rarely given out. It's one of the few things that a mayor can do, and I can't think of anybody more deserving and anybody that's changed the face of this city for the better than Jaime Garcia.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jaime. That brings us to the portion of the council meeting where we are open to public comments for three minutes for items not necessarily on the agenda. First person to sign up this evening is Cheryl Brumbach-Kayford.
My name is Cheryl Brumbach-Kayford. I'm a resident of Elgin. I'm co-coordinator at Elgin Area Climate Action Now. Many thanks to the City Council for your declaration of a climate emergency a couple of years ago, and for the few follow-up measures you have taken, including Elgin Community Solar and staff work toward municipal aggregation of one hundred percent renewable electricity. However, we are still waiting for municipal aggregation. The community solar program has only garnered a few dozen subscriptions, while hundreds of other households remain on a waiting list. Meanwhile, the Sustainability Commission has not tackled other large initiatives that would make a significant impact on climate change, focusing instead on small feel-good projects for the most part. I do urge the council, however, to approve the plastic bag ordinance that is coming from the Sustainability Commission. The climate crisis is upon us. U.S. city leaders must take notice and move to immediate action. Your inaction is occurring during a year when climate change has become so obvious, there's no room left to deny it. Extreme heat waves across much of our country and our world, many more days than usual when temps in Elgin exceed the norm, plus extreme flooding, extreme drought, extreme and unusual storms. We are seeing shifting weather patterns that are among the tipping points alerted by climate scientists. We are seeing red alerts everywhere, in fact, from the scientists and the international bodies that monitor climate. They are saying to us in no uncertain terms that we are in now the last few possible years for any human actions to have a hope of mitigation. As City Council, you have the power to instruct city staff and city commissions to identify and carry out the most effective climate actions possible for a municipality of Elgin's size and location. You have the power to put money behind that. I know you have money available to you because I sat through your budget discussions at the end of last year, and I heard the big dollar numbers being tossed around. You have the money. You need to use it to address this crisis. The statement that climate action can't be taken if it costs something is no longer tenable. It is inaction on climate that will cost us, and it will cost an awful lot. It may cost us everything, including our future and that of our children. Take action immediately and make it effective. Cut our city's greenhouse gas emissions from buildings, businesses, and transportation, and move Elgin to one hundred percent renewable energy sources. Remove Elgin's support from fossil fuel production and use, and shift our support to renewable energy. Change up our building codes and municipal ordinances in response to climate needs. Fully protect our city's green spaces, trees, land and water that is still in a natural state. Shift all "development" to already built-upon land. Protect our native species and their habitats, insects, birds, plants, and animals. Work with other public and private entities like U46 and ECC and our hospitals and large industry to do the same. And educate Elginites on why all of this is so crucial and what each of us can do personally and in our own homes. You need to take action. You can't wait for others to do it for you. You cannot wait for the Sustainability Commission. You have the power to do these things. You need to do them now. Now is the only time we have.
Marcus Banner?
Good evening. I'm Marcus Banner, the People's Champ, and I come to you as one, one people, one voice, one community. I know we are allotted three minutes, but I respectfully ask if I can have about five minutes to complete my thoughts. Thank you. In regards to the decision made about the investigative firm, our community is very discouraged and disappointed that our city and this council had the opportunity to show the citizens that they care about truth and transparency, as well as the opportunity to be officials above politicians. Officials that officiate in a way that is beneficial to all the citizens, especially the ones from our forgotten neighborhoods, not just the privileged ones. But this opportunity was traded in for more business as usual, showing our community that this city considers us to be the least of its citizens, and that this so-called independent investigating firm is doing exactly what it was designed to do. Create the illusion of being independent, all the time being quarterpacked to by the institution it is supposed to be independent of. In my experience, the evidence shows this to be true. I had a firsthand deal with an investigator from this firm, and answers I received were disturbing. I helped the citizen put in a complaint about officer misconduct. The next day, the citizen was pulled over, ticketed, and arrested as he left work. He felt he was targeted. This information was passed on to the investigator. I asked the investigator, was he going to be able to subpoena the officer's personal records from his phone to see if the officer under investigation was in contact with the arresting officer? He responded to me that he didn't have the power to do that. How can we have a firm do an honest investigation to find the truth when they are blocked from looking in the places that the truth is lying? When a crime takes place in our city, we encourage and fully desire our citizens to reach out with any and all information that could help the investigator find the truth. Yet when it comes to this so-called independent firm being contacted with information and witnesses about ongoing investigations, they decide to share this information with the very institution they are supposed to be independent of, resulting in citizens and city employees being sent threatening messages from management saying that they are interfering with an ongoing investigation. Does that sound familiar? So now I would like for our council to help me make sense of this. How an independent investigation firm keeps the very institution it's supposed to be independent of updated about who is contacting them and the information that could help find the truth in their investigation? This sounds a lot more like obstructing an investigation, more so than a citizen coming forth with information. If anyone should be getting firsthand information from victims and all parties involved, it should be this council, because you have the power and the responsibility to ensure these investigations are truthful and uncorrupted by the institutions being investigated. Our councilwoman was right to use oversight and right to ask questions of this so-called independent firm. Since we are at a point where black lives no longer matter, and it's not politically cool anymore, so all the institutionalized politicians who pounded their chests about making monumental change have folded at the thought of holding law enforcement accountable for their wrongdoings. So here's my public announcement. Holding law enforcement accountable and not allowing unworthy officers to abuse their power does not mean we don't support our law enforcement agencies. I'm gonna say that one more time for those who are gonna miss everything that I've said. They'll miss this part. Holding law enforcement accountable and not allowing unworthy officers to abuse their power does not mean we don't support our law enforcement agencies. It means we don't support injustices and tyranny. We call on this council, in the name of transparency, to open an investigation into all the investigations that have been conducted by this firm. We call on you to do it personally and publicly, so all citizens and city employees have the opportunity to speak freely and without retribution. And I'll leave you as I always come, as one people, one voice, one community. Thank you.
Mary Shesgreen?
Hi, my name is Mary Shesgreen. I'm with Fox Valley Citizens for Peace and Justice. In two thousand and eleven, the City of Elgin joined a global organization called the International Cities of Peace. This happened through the work of people like Siggy Simonos and Danielle Henson and several others. I don't know who all, but they connected Elgin with this international organization that encourages peace. Those folks have died or gone away, and they've handed on the responsibility and the privilege of doing this work to my organization. And we pick it up with great humility and delight. So the International Day of Peace, strictly speaking, is September twenty-first. We are planning two events to honor the City of Peace this year. Neither one of them we managed to get on September twenty-first for logistical reasons. Nevertheless, this is about honoring, marking the International Day of Peace. On Sunday, the eighteenth of September, we are going to hold a speak-out in Wing Park. We are inviting people, especially young people, who are not famous, who are not gifted speakers necessarily, who are not well-recognized or important. We want those people, young people, to come and tell us their personal stories of experiencing racism, or sexism, or homophobia, or transphobia, or oppression on the job, like wage theft, or retaliation for speaking up. So that's going to be this coming Sunday from one to three in Wing Park. I sent each of you an email about it earlier today. You are all welcome to come. We especially want to hear from young people at this event. And then in the middle of October, we have not firmed up the date yet, we are going to hold a webinar on a question which may seem remote. The nation of Pakistan has suffered incredible flooding, as you probably all have seen on the nightly news. Over thirteen hundred people are dead. A million people have lost their homes. Where are those people gonna go? This is caused by climate change. Cheryl has told us clearly how we must address climate change. In Pakistan, we see the result of climate change, and it's killing people. It's devastating people. It's making people into climate migrants. So the question we want to address is what does the United States owe to Pakistan and other poor countries? Because our greenhouse gas emissions are enormous. We are historically the biggest emitter, and we are still the biggest emitter in terms of per capita, whereas Pakistan emits of per capita, whereas Pakistan emits less than 1% of the greenhouse gases of the world. This is a global injustice. What are we gonna do about it? And it's only one of many countries that have suffered because of our lifestyles, which are heavy into consumption, but mainly because of the grip that the fossil fuel industry has on our country. The fossil fuel industry doesn't intend to stop unless we stop them. The things Cheryl was talking about are ways that Elgin can begin to try to stop the fossil fuel industry. Marcus told us about ongoing racism and how it gets covered up. So our event on Sunday is about letting young people who have been on the receiving end of racism tell us what it has done to them, emotionally, sometimes physically, socially, We, in our work for peace, we handle tough topics, we handle controversial topics. There are two kinds of peace. There's the kind of peace where everybody's quiet because they're afraid to speak, like in totalitarian countries. Here, we have much more freedom, but there are still ways that the truth gets buried and people get intimidated into silence. So, that's what we're gonna be about as we work, as we carry on this Cities of Peace responsibility. We're gonna be about bringing up tough topics and trying to deal with them honestly. Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to bids. The first item is bid number 22-031 Riverside Water Treatment Plant Switchgear Improvements.
Mayor, make the motion to award the bid to John Burns Construction in the amount of $9,135,000.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I also ask that it include approval of Change Order 1 with a deductive amount of $300,500?
Gotcha. As amended.
Can you use a second? I'll second it as amended. Amended and seconded, add the $300,500 Change Order. Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0. Item 2 is bid number 22-050 Larkin Avenue Pedestrian Crosswalk Improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Rauschenberg?
Yeah, I'm very happy to see this on the agenda. I know that many people in the city have been working on it. I'm sure they included U-46 and the young students themselves, I'm guessing.
I'm not sure about the young students themselves, but U-46 was definitely at the table and is contributing to the fence that is gonna be constructed to help funnel the traffic in the proper direction.
Right. And so, for the citizens to know, there'll be a mid-block crosswalk, which, you know, I'm happy this has happened. I still think there are issues at other schools that we should keep our eye on for the safety of all our students. So, thanks to the staff and U-46 that made this happen.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would also like to thank staff and U-46 and the businesses and Elgin Police Department for looking out for the safety of our students. And this was very important to work on this, because people sometimes feel that this is something that's always happened, that we've always had students come out in the middle of the road to go to these businesses, and you know, that's not normal, that's not right. Why do we have to wait for somebody to get hurt before the city does something? So I was very happy that the city, along with U-46 and the businesses, came out with a solution, and I'm very excited to see this happen. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thor?
Thank you. I would just like to thank Councilwoman Martinez for actually being the one that brought this to the forefront in the very beginning.
Ms. Powell?
Thank you, Mayor Captain. I'm glad to see this moving forward. As a parent of a high schooler, not necessarily at Larkin, obviously, safety is a huge issue that's forefront in my mind all the time when it comes to young people, because unfortunately, our young people don't always make the best decisions. So, you know, we have to put things like this in place to help them continue to be safe and to make better decisions to keep them safe. So thanks to staff and EPD and everyone that's been involved with this and U-46 in putting this together, and definitely wanna just really ask the public and the students and staff and parents of Larkin High School to really encourage your students to use this properly. None of us wanna see anybody get hurt or worse. So, once this goes in place, and even before then, you know, just exercise caution and good judgment, but definitely, please use this for how it was intended, to keep everyone safe and being able to go back home to their family at night. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, thank you. I'm definitely happy to see this come to fruition this evening. I wish it was in place all those years ago when I attended Larkin, 'cause I was one of those kids running across four lanes of traffic that was breaking all the rules. But thankfully, the next generation won't have to go through that. And I almost quoted Hove, you know? Y'all don't know that verse, I guess, huh? Okay. All right. There you go. There you go. Somebody know it. So, no. But so, really happy to see this come forward. Thank you to staff, U-46, and yeah, so I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberg again?
I know, I would also like to thank the Havelkas. They have been talking to us for about a year, and they brought this up also as a concern as they drive down this street when children were crossing. And so, Kristen and Rob Havelka were really one of the, I wanna thank citizens for being there on behalf of our other students as well. So for the Havelkas, thank you.
All right, Court, please call a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg? Yes.
Shaw? Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved 9-0. Brings us to other business. The first item is a resolution authorizing execution of a real estate contract for the purchase of a portion of 8 South Spring Street.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Hearing on, Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberg? Yes.
Shaw? Second.
Yes.
Thor? Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-1, and one abstention. Item 3 is an ordinance amending Section 2.52.165 of the Elgin Municipal Code 1976 as amended entitled Internal Investigations Regarding Internal Investigations of Members and Employees of the Police Department. Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Hearing, Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you. We had a lot of discussion on this, obviously, at the last meeting, and I've been thinking about this a lot. I guess, a couple of questions that come to mind, because obviously, the ordinance change really constricts in terms of our ability as a elected body to ask questions And I understand the need for transparency, support that, obviously, very much in favor of having this investigative body do this work. But I want people to understand, as has been stated here tonight by Mr. Banner who spoke, there are some serious questions and concerns that people have about how investigations are being conducted, who's seeing reports, who's potentially having influence over reports before they come to us. And those are legitimate concerns. We are paying these people to be independent and thorough. It is our job to make sure that they are doing the work that we want them to do. So my questions, in terms of, that were strictly procedural, despite how some people on this dais wanted to try to make them seem like I was trying to influence an investigation, that's wholly not true. I've got some questions. I've got some questions about the interaction between staff and this investigator. Are there draft reports that come back to the city before we get the final report that are later edited before we get a final report? I guess that question would be for the city manager.
There are reports that are exchanged between the chief of police and the investigator that have, but the editing has nothing to do with any substance of the findings. It's simply to confirm the accuracy of information, and I'm sure the chief can provide you more context on any questions you would have in that regard. That has been contemplated from the beginning, and again, there is no substantive changes or nothing that has to do with the determinations.
So, and Chief, if you can come forward.
Provide examples.
Can you give us an idea of what that editing or that back and forth looks like? Yeah, so the process, just so everyone understands, and the contract that was signed with the law firm, too, allows for a discussion with the police chief prior to a final report. I believe that's actually in the contract, the language. So what happens is, the internal investigation is initiated, whether it's by a citizen complaint or internally. So I send an email to the law firm with the, whether it's a citizen complaint or if it's meant because it's internally generated. That part, a number is issued, a report of inquiry, which is the tracking number, basically. And at that point, any additional information, so it's their job to investigate, it's their job to ask us for information. So the point of contact is Deputy Chief Schusler, or maybe the commanders. So, he'll reach out, the investigator will reach out, sometimes it's, they have several attorneys in their office. They'll reach out to Deputy Chief Schusler, one of the commanders. In their absence, it may be me, but that doesn't happen very often. He sets up the, if there's interviews that need to be conducted for police officers, not for citizens, we have nothing to do with that. He facilitates maybe getting more information, body-worn cameras, you know, video, any additional reports. Once that all takes place, the next part where I have any part of it is a report is sent to me, it's a draft. It's my opportunity to review the report and to ask additional questions. So I may ask, was this asked? Where is this additional information? So that process, and I will tell you, being involved in internal investigations for almost 12 years now as a commander and as the chief, very rarely do you get an investigation that doesn't have a question, maybe ask for additional information, and that's to ensure that it's a proper and thorough investigation. So, once that happens, then the final report is, and there are many instances where there aren't any questions at all. And once that happens, then the final report is sent to, well, at the time, it was myself and Corporation Counsel, Mr. Cogly. Now, my understanding is, obviously, the investigator is sending it simultaneously to the council. The only people that see those reports internally in the police department are supervisors who need to see those reports, if it's their employee, if there's discussions about discipline. And obviously, the council gets the reports. We receive FOIA requests. When FOIA requests are answered, we comply with FOIA laws, we redact when appropriate. So, that's the process. You're welcome. So, there is back and forth around, you know, the final report, asking the investigator, did they ask specific questions, making sure that they're being thorough. Does the police department have anything to do with who, any influence on who is interviewed? I know you said you don't have any influence on who is interviewed in terms of citizens, but in terms of your internal complaints, do you have influence around who is interviewed for those internal complaints? No. So that is, the investigator will say, especially, it's obviously the subject of the complaint, so the officer themselves will be interviewed. If there's additional officers on the complaint, they're getting interviewed. Sometimes the investigator may choose not to interview them because there's body-worn camera, so they may not choose to do that. But I don't direct, you know, and say, you need to interview these, I don't do that. Like I said, my interaction is at the very beginning, when it's an email that's sent saying, here's the complaint. Body-worn camera will be sent by our system specialist, whatever video you need. From there on, he communicates with Deputy Chief Schusler. There have been times where he has communicated with me because he's not here or commander's not here. And when I get the final report, and I think it's important to understand that, you know, reading internal investigations and seeing the information that needs to be there. I don't direct the questions in the interview, I'm not in the interview. I read it, but I have the right to ask questions, because I'm going to be making disciplinary, you know, decisions that it's important to me that I have all the information available to me. But there's no, I'm not sitting in the interview, I'm not telling him to ask certain questions, I'm not, Deputy Chief Schusler, it's just information exchange, they may want some reports, they may want some information on a call for service, and they conduct their investigation. And when we get it back, I do my due diligence, because that's what I'm supposed to do, and I believe that's, it's an appropriate mechanism to ensure that the report is thorough, that the investigation is thorough, that when you guys receive the report, you're not gonna call me and say, you know, "Chief, there's, you know, tons of stuff missing here." So, it's my responsibility to ensure that it's thorough and it's accurate, and especially when I'm making disciplinary decisions. Thank you. Because you are making those decisions, just, you know, and you should have that information, and you should get all of your questions answered, the same way I felt that my questions should be answered and anyone else's questions up here on the dais should be answered. Because we have a different responsibility, but a responsibility nonetheless. I would like this council to consider making some further adjustments to this ordinance. I think, again, in the vein of transparency, I think it's important, as this interaction is going on between our investigator and staff, that we all be included in it. The same way that this ordinance is requiring that, moving forward, we ask these questions and get these questions answered publicly, and potentially even bring the investigator in, which I think is a wonderful idea, and have them do a presentation. But I think it is important that, as those interactions are going on between the independent investigator and staff, that we all be copied on that, so that we
that we all be copied on that, so that we see the questions that are being asked the same way we are now changing this ordinance. So that any questions that we ask are being transparently seen as well. So I, I'm making a motion to make that amendment to this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved into second to make an amendment to the ordinance to allow staff to provide feedback to the city council on questions that may, they may, that may arise on an investigation, is that the question, is that your-
No, I guess, let me, let me restate this.
Yeah, it was kind of off track.
So the motion is to include the city council in any correspondence between staff and the independent investigator from the time that the complaint is filed to the time that we get the final complaint, the final report, so that we see that interaction of what questions, what further, questions are being asked by staff, what further direction is being given by staff to this investigator.
Second.
Moving, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you.
Are you, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dixon.
Okay. So, this is new information.
Pardon me?
This is new information. This wasn't a part of the discussion last week. And that changes things for me. Because I was, I had the understanding that there was, the reason why Councilwoman Powell was being called out was because there was no other communication related to the investigation happening between anybody and the investigative firm. And I understand you having some communication with them as far as providing things that they are requesting, contact information, making sure that people are, that their requesting are actually being investigated. And I'm okay with you even having a draft version to make sure that the information that you provided is accurate and right. I would not have a, I don't have a problem with it if you did or if you didn't, but we just memorialize all of us not being able to have any contact with them at all. And if I'm correct, that's by email, phone, or anything at all, that has to go through city staff. Is that right, city manager?
My understanding.
That's your understanding, right? Yeah. So I'm having a hard time understanding how we would be in agreement with that, which I was, but for what you're explaining to me, which is, you know, having the draft forms to make sure that information is accurate, that's some back and forth happening, that doesn't seem balanced to me, and so help, so take another shot at, help me explain, help me understand.
I'll give you an example, which no council member is going to be able to answer this question for an investigator.
Sure.
So there was a draft report that came in, there was some discrepancy about a police report. So a person was placed into custody under an incident that happened in 2019. So when the officer wrote the police report, the person was arrested this year, but there, the, we, the way we do our internal reporting system, it was under the initial report, which is 2019. So in the report, there's some confusion by the investigator that's basically saying, the report was signed on this day, but it really didn't happen until 2022. So I understand our records management system. So for clarity, I said, this is why the 2019 report number is being used. No council person will be able to answer that. Additionally, sometimes they spell officers' names wrong. Sometimes there might be some, you know, grammar, sometimes there might be, I, I want to make sure that people know that that draft report, it's for information that the police department, whether it's our process, how we do things, you know, officers timed on the job, things that are happening that are outside the investigation, it's more clarity. So a council member, you know, if I need to, and I will say that I, you know, the council's going to vote however they vote, but it would be for me to contact the council to say, I need to send you an email because the person used, there was, you know, an error in the spelling of an officer's name, and that's why I'm having a conversation. Or they may not have interviewed an officer that was on the complaint. I mean, that, that's, it will be time consuming, and a lot of it is stuff that no one would really be able to answer anyway, except the police department. So the draft is the draft, I think the, the, I want it, I don't want it to be any type of insinuation that the outcomes are being changed. The outcomes are what the outcomes are. When the draft is, I, that's what their outcome is, they've done their investigation. There's just some things in there that sometimes need some further explanation, because I have questions when I read something, and I might say, well, what, what are you talking about here? And a lot of times, it may have something to do with a process in the department that they're not familiar with, that they're trying to explain, that, we get some clarity there, so that when people read it, they understand what they're reading. So that example that I gave you is usually what it's about. It's a process, it's a grammar, it's something that has to do with, maybe they have the wrong report number. So it's, you know, it's minor, it's nothing that's of a major content to the investigation. So I hope that helps to give you guys some insight as to what, you know, what these conversations are. And additionally, when they're asking for things, Deputy Chief Schusler will accommodate them. They ask for additional police reports, they ask for additional body worn cameras, they ask for cameras, they may ask for an officer's, who, you know, calls for service, how many traffic stops they make, that's all stuff that we have, that we need, then need to turn over to the investigator, so that they can conduct their investigation. So I hope that helps to give some insight into what some of those conversations are.
Okay, when the, when the investigating firm requests to speak with someone, is that request ever denied?
No, and that, that's, I mean, the, anytime they want to speak to an officer, that's facilitated through Deputy Chief Schusler, one of the commanders. The officers have to, they, they have, if they choose not to sit in an interview, it's a policy violation that has consequences up into all the way termination. So they're compelled to speak, they have to sit for their interrogation or interview. So no, they are always accommodated for, now, who they're talking to, if it's a citizen, we have nothing to do with that. We, that's completely on the law firm, we don't get involved in facilitating those type of meetings. Because that would be improper for us to be calling the complainant. I've had complainants call me, whether they're looking for information, and I will call the attorney and say, this person is calling me, you need to call them. So I've had emails, I believe that people are asking, you know, what's the status or what's going on? I'll just forward any email from a complainant.
Okay, and in Mr. Banner's statement, I think he might have left, Mr. Banner's statement and his example he gave where, if I understood correctly, the person that was being, one of the people that were being interviewed said to the investigating firm, that whoever that representative was, can you speak to X person inside of the, inside of EPD? And they advise, well, we don't have that power to, to do that. That shouldn't be the case?
No, what I think he was talking about was subpoena power, so he was referencing-
Okay, I understood. So, okay, subpoena power, so, but if it wasn't my example, if that was the case, that should never, that should never be, that should never happen, essentially, right?
No, they can talk to whoever they want, I mean, talk, yeah, that's the whole point of an investigation. They may interview an officer, and that officer may give some additional information, and they may say, we want to talk to this other officer. So that's for them to ask for the officer, we make the accommodation, we make the arrangements to say, hey, you need to be interviewed, and they're interviewed.
Yeah, I got you. I think a lot of times on this subject, we deal with the perception issue. And we have a choice of either to be dismissive of some perception issues, or to really stop and just, you know, think about the consequences of ignoring such perceptions. I think the questions that Councilwoman Powell asked the investigative firm were proper, because they weren't talking about any other, any specific case, they were very general in nature. And speaking to the process, and I wouldn't say that what your, your questions are process questions, but it's just more of what you say, which is correcting spelling and making sure that pertinent information was really quickly.
They spelled an officer's name wrong, sometimes it's, they're using a different name, it's spelling errors. Sometimes it's, you know, I'm asking questions that are substantial information that I need to make a decision. Because if I am going to be imposing discipline, I need to make sure that when I do that, that I have all the information that I need. So, you know, prior to the independent investigator being hired, I will tell you that I never had an internal investigation, it might, maybe one for a traffic crash, but very rarely did an investigation come through me where I didn't kick it back and say, I have more questions. And that's doing a thorough investigation to ensure that, when discipline is imposed, if it is, that it can be held up should arbitration occur. So I need to make, you know, and again, it's, I understand the perception, I, I understand what you're saying. But I also want people to know that, you know, the independent investigator, since, you know, we've had him for almost two years now, almost two years, we've never told them they can't interview someone, we've never told them that you need to do A, B, or C, that's not what we do. We're, we're waiting for the investigation, have it come to us, but questions are going to be asked, as they should be. And I would expect that, you know, if you guys read a report, and if you saw something there, you might call me and say, hey, why wasn't this done, or why wasn't that done? So the lens that I look through is also through, you know, making sure that the council has the information that they need, the city manager has the information, Corporation Counsel has the information that they need, and ultimately, me, who will be making decisions that can impact officers. So I understand the perception, but I hope that this gives clarity to what the process is and how it works.
Yeah, okay.
Manager's got a question.
Councilmember Dixon, not so much a question, but just wanted to emphasize, the majority of the complaints that we're talking about by the independent investigator are initiated by the police department. So these are, these are, this is the police department's third floor recognizing what it believes to be misconduct, and sending that out to the independent investigator for investigation. That's where, that, that's what the chief is referring to, wants to make sure that when that's, that investigation's being conducted, they fully understand the processes that they're working with. And it happens more often than not, again, on the things that she investigated, because typically, when it involves an outside complaint, it's almost completely hands off, I would imagine.
Yeah, and there's sometimes when we're, it's a complaint that's generated internally, and we have to give the investigator the background of how this happened. So you, you know, whether that's a conversation saying, this is what came to be, this is how we had this information, here's some, you know, fact finding, preliminary fact finding that we've done to ensure that there's actually some type of violation. So that's just, so that they can do their investigation. You can't just send someone a sheet of paper and say, well, figure out the backstory. They need the, they need the information, they need to be able to say, okay, I see where this came from, these are some people I'm going to have to investigate, here's some interviews I'm going to need to do, so they need everything so that they can also conduct a thorough investigation.
Yeah, and thank you for that background, city manager, and I'm not opposed to you having that information.
No, they, and I, I can tell you, I can't make decisions without information.
I'm not opposed to you having that information and providing that information to the investigative reporter. I think the question is, is should it be even on both sides? Being able to ask, ask questions, being able to ask questions on the other side, clarification, whatever the situation is. Okay, that's fine, but I'm just trying to just figure out a way to be fair here. And I understand that the fair is a part of your job in trying to make sure that the investigation is fair, that is correct. And then on our side, we have duties to make sure that the investigation is, or the investigators, and the investigation is also fair too, as well. Okay, so do you also receive the draft reports from outside citizen complaints?
Yes, so the complaint, when they're done with their investigation, whether the complaint is externally generated or internally, the draft report of the final investigation is given to me for that final review to ask questions for any information to be clarified. So on any investigation that goes out to the, to the law firm, that's the process.
I got you. Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Anything else for chief, lay down this way. Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to be clear, last meeting, we voted eight one that if we had questions for outside investigators, that we would bring them here to the council chambers to ask questions. Now, as we have this in front of us, I just want to be clear, are we voting on two separate items here, or are we voting to move this forward in addition to the secondary item of-
So procedurally, on the agenda tonight is the actual written ordinance, which is a follow-up to that vote last week, which talks about how communication should be handled. Councilmember Powell has made, that motion was, to approve that ordinance was made in second, and then during the discussion, Councilmember Powell has now made a motion, essentially to further amend, to add the provision, to also add the provision in addition to the amendment that's already before you. That any correspondence between staff and the investigators, between the time a complaint is filed and a report, is issued to include the city council on that, any such correspondence. So her, procedurally, how you would vote is, and that, that motion has been made in second, so that is technically a motion to amend. So procedurally, the first vote that would be taken would be on Councilmember Powell's motion to amend, to also add that provision. And that will either be accepted or not. And then a second motion will be made, a second vote will be taken on the overall item, which was the first amendment, which was the communications.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. So now we understand how it'll roll forward procedurally, I would just like to say, I understand the desire to want to be able to have a check and balance here. But again, in this form of government that we have, it's part-time council, full-time staff. And I think we're getting into the territory that if we were to be questioning our chief of changing and editing substantive issues in a report, you're talking about firing a chief. That would be, at least for me, one vote, you're in that territory now. I personally trust the chief, I don't want to be overburdening with administrative, like you just said. Logistically, in my mind, I'm thinking, how would that end up in my inbox? It would just be every single edit coming through. So, as we're seeing tonight, we have an entire report that's being brought forward to us from a task force that put in countless hours of work with the police department. As we see, the police is, I believe, in favor of almost every single recommendation with consideration to two. I think, I don't, I could speak for myself, and the sentiments that I've gotten from the community, I believe that we do have trust in Chief Lally. And obviously, we're trying to fortify the organization so that whoever comes after Chief Lally is going to be continuing the standard that she's put forward. So, I mean, I guess I could go on and on about this, but I will say that I won't be in support of this amendment. I support the initial ordinance as it stands, and, and that's how I'll be voting.
Anything else? Ms. Rouschenberg.
So I have a question that the draft goes to Corporate Counsel and our chief. And Corporate Counsel, do you ever make comments about how you might think the investigation, do you review it and say, this doesn't seem-
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I was having a sidebar with-
The draft does not go to Corporation Counsel, it only comes to me. He only gets the final report, that was the question.
I don't review draft reports.
Oh, okay, I thought you, you both got the draft.
No, I, I don't receive the draft reports, I may have received- I may have received a version, a draft, once, but I didn't review it. I don't comment on them.
I, I guess from my perspective, I don't know if I have enough information and to make a good decision on this. Uh, I guess I would like to, as we're suggesting, to have our outside entity, um, our contracted law firm to come and discuss it with us as well before I feel comfortable making that decision.
So is that a motion to table?
Okay, yes, I will, a motion to table.
What, what, what are you asking to table? The, the, the ammendatory?
The amended.
The councilmember Powell's amendment or the underlying, uh, ordinance that was originally on the agenda, or both?
Can I amend both?
You can move to table both if you wish to, sure. Looking for permission from somebody, or are we, what are we doing here?
Second.
So the motion, as I understand it, that was just seconded, is to table both the original amendment that is in written form and councilmember Powell's proposed further amendment. Is that right?
Yes, until we have an opportunity to...
And that's been seconded.
Uh, point of clarification, that, uh, we can approve the original ordinance and then provide an amendment later, correct, Mr. Cogly?
You could. You could approve the original proposed amendment, um, by, uh, that was on the agenda tonight by, but you have to, you have to, um, deal with councilmembers Powell's, uh, a mandatory motion in some fashion to get to it. So, uh, that would either be by tabling that ammendatory motion or by denying it. But what's on the table now, which will have to be disposed of first on a vote, is the motion to table both items.
Okay, maybe, oh, table just the amended amendment.
To table just the amended.
Yeah, can I take that back?
Table just councilmember Powell's proposed amendment?
Yes. So that's the motion, uh, is to table councilmember Powell's amended, um, motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Wait, wait, no, 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 no. I, my second was based on tabling both, so you, she needs another second, because I'm not seconding that.
Okay.
So point of order.
So councilmember Rouschenberg is making a motion to table councilmember Powell's proposed further amendment, and that would require a second to be voted on. That would leave on the floor the original ordinance amendment about communications.
So is there another, is there a second to the, to table the amendment, Ms. Powell's Hearing no second, then we're back to the original, correct?
The amendment.
Yep, we're, we're back to the original ordinance.
No, you're, you're, well, there will have to be a vote on councilmember Powell's amendment to add the requirement that the council be included on all such correspondence. That, that motion has to be disposed of before the main motion is then, the main item is called.
Okay, so we, we have a motion for the, we have a motion for the amendment. It's either up or down.
This is councilmember Powell's proposed further amendment.
Right.
To amend the main motion, which is the underlying councilmember shouldn't communicate directly amendment that's in writing on the agenda.
Yep. Mr. Stefan.
Um, I'm trying to make sure I'm following all the machinations here, but, um, just the thought that I've had is that the amendment that we've, that's proposed, that's before us, was an attempt to try to tighten the process and keep the independent investigator truly independent. And the proposed amendment will allow all those communications to come to nine councilmembers and mayor. And I just, my reaction, sitting here and trying to process this, is that that will create a situation where you have nine opportunities for that information to get out.
Correct.
We've certainly had that problem with, uh, executive session matters in prior councils. I, I'm, I'm just trying to process it, and that, that concern comes to my, my mind, is that that could happen. So I, you know, I, I would like more time to, I would like to actually hear from the investigators and ask them some questions. But I, I'm having some concerns that we're trying to tighten the process and keep them truly independent. Now we're considering, uh, an amendment that would provide this information coming to nine of us with opportunities that, you know, who knows what could happen? That's, that's my concern. Kind of loosening the, the independence, so, um, that's just my thoughts. I'm just thinking out loud. That's all. No questions.
Okay. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, we discussed the proper protocol and roles in ongoing investigations. And the complaint process and review, it needs to be held at higher standards. And I think that by going with this recommendation, um, or this change, we should take out independent out then, because then it no longer becomes independent. That's just my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne.
I would just like to echo some words of Councilman Good, and that's that, um, I'm 100% confident with our chief. She has a job to do. The investigators have a job to do. That's the process that I see. That's why we hired them. And then I understand what Councilman Stefan says. The next thing you know, this opens up the floodgates for situations that could happen. I think the process is, is proper as the fact that it goes through the right channels, not opens it up to all of us. That, to me, that's not what we're here for. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the amendment.
Here's it.
Okay, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. I don't think that the proposed amendment, um, has to do anything with Chief Lally personally. We all sit in seats that we don't own. And like we do, like we consider other topics, we are making decisions for not just today, but five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. And whoever will be inheriting what is being done right now. So I don't want that to be a personal slight at the chief, because I trust the chief. She's an excellent chief. She's done a great job. So my perspective on this is, has nothing to do with her personally. And I don't think, I'm not going to speak for, for Tish, uh, for Councilwoman Powell, but I don't think that that's the, the case with her either. And I believe that when, when we talk about, when we have the conversations concerning police, uh, and policing in our community or around the country, it automatically, for those who are in defense of certain things, it becomes very personal. And that stops a lot of conversation, because who wants to personally go after someone when that's really not the, uh, it's not the cause of it. It's, you know, "You didn't do this," you know? That's not what this is about right now. Chief, you can be chief as long as you would like to be chief in my eyes. Okay? But one day, we all have an expiration date. So when that does come and someone else inherits this process, we want it to be as tight and as fair as it possibly can. That's what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about the next iteration of us. So I would like to speak with the investigators, because I, I think what has come out since the last agenda item is that, since we're city council, we didn't get into all the details of what the process would look like. And that's why Councilwoman Powell was asking the questions, because those details aren't normally left up to us. We leave that up to staff. And staff, you know, normally does a great job with that stuff. But through that being placed on the agenda, now having conversation, a second conversation about it now, now it raises some questions, now it raises some perception issues, now it's, "Well, let's just have the conversation there. Let's make sure we know the ins and outs." Yeah. I don't have any desire to see emails of you making name changes. I really don't. No one has time for that up here, right? But if we are going to have the conversation, then we need to be talking about then maybe what kinds of questions can even be asked? If it's very, if it's name changes, who cares, right? But where does that end? We, is that, how slippery could that slope be for somebody who inherits your seat five years from now? We gonna put limitations on that, on what kinds of questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, 'cause I just want to also, you know, the complaints that come in, a vast majority, they're on body worn camera, they're on video. So the substance of the whatever's happening is never going to change. It's on video. So, you know, some of the que, so I, I think a lot of times too, there's this perception that this, the investigator's going to be able to kind of like guide the investigation. It's on video. The, the investigator's going to look at the video, they're going to ask the officer questions. You can't change what's on the video. So the substance of the, the reports that are coming are summaries of what the investigator reads in police reports, what they're seeing on body worn camera video, what they garner from, uh, interviews with the, you know, whether it's the complainant, additional witnesses, or the officer themselves. So, um, so the questions that are asked at that last step, again, it's anything from very minor things to name changes to procedural things. Um, or it could be a question of, you know, "Can you give me some clarity on what this person, you wrote this in here, what does that actually mean?" Uh, especially during, um, interrogations where officers, where we have a court reporter, they're summarizing that interrogation, which could have been ours. And so we're, I'm provided with the court reporters', um, you know, the entirety of the interrogation, but they may write something in the report where I'm, you know, "Give me some clarity here too." Or, um, "Did this person, when they, they mentioned this thing, was there further investigation done on that?" So it's the whole gamut of stuff, and that's why I'm saying, you know, to, um, there are some investigation where there's no conversation. The draft comes in, I have no further questions, um, and I just say, "Send the report." So, um, and then there are some that, you know, they're usually the more substantial ones, where there's, um, you know, the ones that there's going to be some type of disciplinary action taken, um, where we just need to make sure everything that is in that report is done in a thorough manner, an appropriate manner. And ultimately, if the officer chooses to take that to arbitration, that we're able to, um, defend that investigation. So I just want to make it clear, a lot of the investigations, a vast majority of them, they're on body camera. So there's really nothing that you're going to change, uh, because the evidence exists of what actually happened during that time. So you can't really change. Now, an officer could choose to go in there and say something other, but the body camera is there, and then that would obviously be an integrity issue, so a truthfulness issue. So just wanted to make mention of that as well.
Okay. Mr. Counsel.
I was just going to suggest, Councilmember Powell, and you'll understand this too, uh, I, I think a great apt analogy, given the, uh, community task force on policing, is we received a draft report from Kerns and West on the recommendations. It was bad, that first draft. You provided edits, I provided edits, the chief provided edits, but so, Ms. Haven provided edits, and I'm sure that there's others, but nothing substantively changed in that report from the recommendations. And I think that's what the chief is trying to, to convey in this, or I, I, not trying to, is conveying in this instance. That's all.
Mr. Stefan.
Yeah, and I want to follow up on my point, because it follows with Corey's very important point directed at the chief of police and how that's not a permanent seat. None of us are either. So I wanted to, I wanted to clarify, I'm not, I'm not saying anybody is leaking executive session stuff here. I've been on this council long enough that it was, somebody, there are people that were not here anymore. But the point being is that we're not here permanently either, so we can change. There's going to be nine people up here that are going to be different than us in the future. And that's the point, that's kind of where my concerns are going as I think this through, is, is if we're going to be sending emails to nine people of what's going on in, in the investigations as that's going forth, you know, the opportunity there is pretty, pretty significant. So that's, that's my concern, so.
I, I have to agree, and I've looked through the, um, other issues with, uh, executive session, and, uh, I don't see the value of, uh, being greater than the harm that could happen. And I think that it opens up the investigation that, uh, to nine, and, you know, uh, I really don't care how you spell somebody's name. And I, my email box is ugly as it is, so, you know, having those come in, I, you know, I, I don't, um, I'm a big believer in not micromanaging either. And I think the chief does the job, makes her decision, makes her decisions, and I trust her as well to do that. And, uh, I think that, um, yeah, as minor as these things sound like they are, I don't think that there's a, there's a benefit to me to hear them. So, really quick here, come on.
A quick follow-up, because I, I definitely understand we need to move through our, our agenda.
Yep.
Um, yes, I understand and totally, completely respect the fact that you need to ask questions and you need to get all of that information to do your job. Absolutely. And I want you to have that. Do I want to see name changes, spelling changes? That's really not what I was looking for. But we talk so much about transparency, and we talk so much about, um, having this be an independent process. And removing all of us from this equation, who's sitting here now in these seats and who's, who will potentially be a chief in the future? And listening to concerns that I've heard, valid concerns, not just tonight, but from other members of the community, which is what prompted the procedural questions that I asked of the body. So if there are concerns about a council member partic, uh, potentially tainting the process, why wouldn't there be the same concerns potentially about a staff member potentially tainting the process? When we're doing internal investigations that don't involve body cameras, that don't involve traffic stops, where there are police that have body worn cameras, that is not, I mean, those are, like you said, very cut and dry, because you can go to a body camera. But say it's a situation of sexual or racial harassment within your department, that's not going to be on body camera. That's going to be a whole lot of he said, she said, and documentation and things of that sort. So I'm open to suggestions on how we balance this process so that everyone gets what they need. I am willing to, I have, if, if the council, if the majority of the council passes this ordinance that's before us, um, obviously I will comply with it. I, I wanted to amend it so that there was some balance, but I will respect the, um, the will of the entire council. My concern is that if we're going to put strings on us as council to bring all of this forward so that everyone could see it and be a part of it and understand what questions are being asked and what's going on, that we also kind of see that from the staff perspective too of what's going on. Because quite honestly, sometimes that's the problem that we're trying to address. So I'm not sure the best way to do that. I know that there was a motion to table that didn't, you know, move forward in terms of, um, tabling this. But I just want people to understand where my concerns are, what I'm trying to achieve. It's not anything personal against the chief or anyone else. It is about everyone getting the information that they need and everything being transparent. That's what I'm asking for. And maybe we do table this until we figure out a way to make that work. Because I, I hear what you're saying, chief. I don't want you to feel overburdened, feeling that you have to include all of us on, "Oh, look, we need to make a name change." look, well, I might need to make a name change. That is certainly not the spirit of what I'm looking for, and I'm not trying to make your job any more difficult than what it already is. I tell you to take breaks and vacations all the time, and I mean that. So, I'm just genuinely looking for a way for us to understand the interaction that is going on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, just, just a couple of thoughts, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to listen and hear where you're going. I'm throwing out an idea, I guess, a couple of things, I guess I assume, when we have the lawyer, the independent investigator who's doing this is a lawyer, I'm assuming, right, who's a, has passed the bar, and they've, they've taken certain oaths to certain things as well, there's an assumption that their report has not been altered due to someone bribing them or, um, something like that, but, but should there be, or could there be at the bottom of the report, some sort of attestation to say, hey, there were, there were no edits made to the original drafts, or there's, you know, this, this, I attest that this, this report is true and unaltered, or wanna call up, point to specific things that maybe were added from the draft, like is there, is there something that we would wanna ask them to do that? I, cuz I, I'm, I, truly, I'm trying to hear you out and trying to come up with a solution to something. Now granted, I'm solutioning on the dais, which is also dangerous, as we sometimes, I sometimes fall into, I'll be honest. So, I, I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not sure that I'm ready to come up with any ideas tonight, but I'm hearing you and I'm trying to think of a possible middle ground.
There'd be a question for that.
And that, yeah, that's a good point, that would be a question when we bring the investigating team in, to just say, hey, what, what things could we do to, what things do you do for other organizations, or something like that? That, that's just a brainstorm idea.
So maybe we table that until we bring them in and ask them.
I, I agree, like when we bring them in to ask questions, I think that's gonna open up a whole nother set of conversation that we, we would say, well, gosh, I think we should restructure our policy to be like this, or I think we should restructure it to be like that. I think there will be some possible outcomes of that, I don't know.
Okay. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, I'm just trying to understand, because when you are saying that we should keep staff at the same standards, really, the staff that we're talking about is the city manager, the corporate counsel, and chief lally. Corporate counsel explained what he does with any drafts, you know, I don't know what the city manager's does with his draft, but really, the only staff that we're talking about is chief lally, you know, trying to keep her, um, I, I don't know, to me, it just seems confusing. I, I kinda like the fact that these reports go to them three rather than us nine two, you know? So, to me, it just makes it difficult, or I don't know, just insinuating other things that aren't there.
Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. A suggestion that I would make is, we're just trying to make sure that in off cases where there's thoughts that maybe an investigation isn't being executed properly, this is something that would potentially end up in front of a civilian review, and I think that that administratively, assuming that were to come to be here in Elgin, they would get wind of it, and then they would have access to the draft and the revised report. I think that would be a fair way to move forward, to make sure there's a check, to make sure that it's not an administrative burden on staff and still exercising, uh, operating organization. So, that would be my suggestion, is that this is something that is pushed to a potential civilian review panel.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Just a question, not, not a statement this time. And earlier, did you say that it's either you or one of your commanders that's doing the communicating, or is it always just you?
So, the communication, it, it's different at different levels. So, the initial communication to the law firm is me sending an email that prompts the start of the investigation, and what I send is, if it's an external citizen complaint, they get that with any supporting documents, a sergeant may have written an intake memo. So, whatever we have at that moment is sent to them. If it's an internally generated complaint, so where, you know, the someone from the police department, the supervisor is initiating the complaint, or command staff, they'll get memos, and that is sent via email with a report of inquiry number, which is just the tracking number, and from that point, interviews with officers, additional information, other reports, even the body worn camera is not sent by me, it's not sent by command staff, it's sent by one of our technicians, but anything thereafter, the attorney is communicating with deputy chief Schusler, in his absence, it's a commander, in very rare occasions, it's been me, and I purposely set that up that way, so I have no communication with the attorney until I see a draft report. There have been times where he has called me for some clarification about, and, you know, I've sent a complaint, and he'll call and say, what's kind of the, you know, the background to this, I'll just fill him and say, this is kind of what the complaint is about, here's your questions, but it's set up purposely so that any information that they need, any questions that they may have, goes through the deputy chief or the commander. And like I said, it's very rarely that he'll call me and ask me for things, and I, and I purposely want that for, you know, just for this conversation here, right? So, I'm not seeing police reports prior to seeing a draft, I'm not knowing what the information that he's asking for prior to seeing a draft. So, keeping a little, that, that buffer in place allows me to, here it is, do your investigation, I'll see the draft when I see it. At that point, you know, as I've said, it's anything from, from grammar to spelling, and in some instances, it may be further questions. Was this person interviewed? What's the substance of this statement that's written in here? What do you mean by that? Sometimes it's clarity about a process, so, and then sometimes it's nothing, you know, a, a draft is sent to me and there are, there are no questions because it's pretty straightforward. So, that's how the process goes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rocheberger?
I just wanna make a, a quick statement, that I think this discussion tonight was, is very important, and I think knowing the details is what our job is, to put forward equity in our community and transparency, and I know it seems a little, you know, down to the nitty gritty, but I think that's our job to, to say, this is the way, these are the questions we do need to ask, especially in this very important situation. How we come out, I'm not sure, but it, it was worth the discussion, if you ask me. Thank you.
We still have a motion on the table for the amendment, correct? That's where.
So, the first motion to be voted on is Councilmember Powell's motion to amend, which would add a further amendment regarding being included on correspondence between the investigator and staff.
Okay.
And after that is voted on, then the main motion was the one about communications, about going through staff or bringing the, that was the one that was preliminarily voted on at the last meeting, is now presented in final form. So, the first motion is on council member, the first vote is on Councilmember Powell's motion to amend that further with her proposal.
Okay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
No.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
No.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
No.
Thor?
No.
Mayor Captain?
No, motion fails seven-two. Okay, that brings us back to the original, uh, item three, is the, I'll read that for everybody, is an ordinance amending section twenty-two point five, two point one six five of the Elgin Municipal Code nineteen seventy-six is amended, entitled Internal Investigations Regarding Internal Investigations of Members and Employees of the Elgin Police Department.
There's already a motion in a second.
There's already a motion in a second. So, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
No.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Rocheberger?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved six-three.
Mayor Captain?
Yeah, can I make a, a motion, well, I think we already agreed on, I'd like to make a motion that we have the law, the investigative agency come and do a presentation in, in unison with city staff.
Can ask staff to do that, and have them, yeah.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on that, okay?
Understood, yeah.
We're good, okay.
That's all it takes.
Mayor, just a correction, I, I got kinda confused. What we just voted on, that was the six-three, was to accept what we originally had to begin with, is that right?
It was item, well, item oh-three, yeah.
Okay, cuz then I'd like to change mine to a yes, sorry about that.
You, it was, you were a yes.
And we was?
Yeah, you were a yes.
All right.
Six-three. Okay, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved nine-zero, miscellaneous business.
So moved?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved nine-zero. Uh, announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at six P.M. in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven P.M. in the council chambers. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn back to the executive session.
So moved?
I mean, back to the committee of the whole.
So moved?
Move the second to adjourn, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. Before we go back to the committee of the whole, let's take a five-minute break.[1308.42]
So we are anticipating a board made up of nine members who are at least 21 years of age. They, there's, we did some demographic breakdowns. No fewer than not four people shall be African-American. No fewer than three shall be Hispanic or Latino. No fewer than four shall be women. We, the civilian, the subcommittee thought it was important that law enforcement or immediate relatives of law enforcement would not be members of the civilian review board. And then the terms, we got really down into the weeds. So the discussion that you all were having just a few minutes ago, that was the kind of discussions we were having at each of our meetings. So you have to bear with us. We just got really down into the weeds on some of this stuff. That we were recommending that the, that there should, that civilian review board members would serve three-year terms, but no more than two consecutive terms. And that, of course, that there would be training involved in very, very many, around very many issues, including the Open Meetings Act, diversity, equity, inclusion, and constitutional policing, and all of those other things. And then allowing for the optional training of ride-along programs, of firearm simulation training. So in creating the civilian review board, so these next two items, again, we did not create this PowerPoint. So I want to explain a little bit that the, we would allow for complaints to be brought to a member of the civilian review board, but the member of the civilian review board would assist the complainant in going through the police department process. That's a little bit different than what that says. Because we would not be able to serve on the civilian review board if we were the people bringing the complaints. And that we, the civilian review board thought it wa, the task force thought it was important that the civilian review board have the power to subpoena witnesses if necessary as part of its, as part of its investigative process. And then the civilian review board would make recommendations on discipline to the chief of police. And then if the chief disagrees with our recommendations, then of course, there would be a conversation between the civilian review board and, and the chief of police about that and attempt to come to some sort of resolution. And that was it. I can't believe it. Okay. So I'm happy to take questions. In actuality, the recommendations, the whole document that, and that we came up with covered like seven to eight pages. And so there was no way that we're going to do a 10-page PowerPoint presentation for you all.
Questions for Ms. Hayden.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Thank you.
You've been talking to her for a year. Why would you have a question?
I know. I, I, I know, but I all, I like to share information and ask questions that I've heard from the community. Yes, I've seen all of these people a whole lot, and I'm really grateful for their, their service to our community because this has been a long process. And it's been a lot of hours, a lot of meetings, a lot of homework time away from meetings, doing work. And I don't think people often realize that. So I really, really do appreciate everything that folks have put into this. So I, I hope and, and I believe that this body will take all of these recommendations seriously that have come forward. But to my, my question regarding the civilian review board, what was the, what was the feedback from the community sessions that were, that were held about the formation of a civilian review board?
Thank you for asking that. Overwhelmingly in favor of establishing a civilian review board. That's from both of the community sessions. I was, you know, I was, I got to be like, I don't know, the person that was presenting the information. The feedback from both sessions, again, overwhelmingly in support of it. One, a couple of people had, you know, wanted the civilian review board to have more power and authority than what we've sort of spelled out. What needs to be clarified as this becomes an ordinance or if it's passed is that point of entry, to make it very specific about when the civilian review board would be called in. Because we really, and that was something that was specifically brought up at the session at Galvorn Library. And what I discovered was that I could not answer that question because we kind of went all around the barn in it. So that would be something that would be, to be decided, you know, by this body, the city staff, Chief Lally, on what that, when that point of entry would be. It would not be, the civilian review board would not be involved in like the lesser offenses.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
You're the last one who is presenting, right? Is that correct?
Oh, no.
Oh, just the more?
Oh, yeah. We did a lot of work there.
No, I believe it.
Okay.
Okay, just asking. Thank you.
Ms. Bachenberger.
Yeah. Just to follow up, I don't want an answer, but to follow up what you were just saying. Yeah, how, after we just had the big discussion about our outside agency, where civilian review board comes in and is part of that whole process, right? So it's something we all have to think about, so I don't want to, it's too much for my head tonight.
Well, you really, that is really, and that's why the, the whole listing of our recommendations about the civilian review board is so lengthy. And that's why I want to keep the focus on the overarching recommendation is the creation of a civilian review board to provide accountability and oversight of Elgin Police Department. That's the big recommendation.
Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was at that Galvorn input session, and this conversation was very interesting. And something I want us all to kind of stew on is, well, A, to address this first point in your report under item two and three, I think that's where our discussion from earlier tonight could fall into. It looks like you guys were already considering receiving materials from the chief in the case of an investigation. But there was the question of subpoena power. And so as we all have witnessed, subpoena power seems to lack some teeth even up to the federal level. So I want us all to be mindful of that and to acknowledge that the intention of this is to increase or improve the relations between police and the public. And so as part of us moving forward and considering how this body's going to operate, what the rhythms are going to look like, it was brought up that, you know, maybe they have different capacities. You know, the task force as it exists right now has done a lot of good work, and I think a lot of people could see how that would continue on into the future. So maybe that's part of the annual rhythm is that this group works on overarching policy that you're seeing changing throughout the nation, throughout the state, within our community. But also to, if, if we're really trying to change behavior, I think it's important that we also highlight when something good happens. And I think that it does carry more weight when it comes from residents than it come, not to diminish rewards that are coming from police to police officers, but I think the public would value a review from the public, from residents, and say, this is the behavior we want to see, and we want to recognize that as being positive and proactive. And so I think that could help fill out when this group gets called in, or maybe it's, again, part of an annual rhythm. But I just want us to kind of think about that as we move forward in considering this board.
In one of the, like a mini recommendation, if you will, there's conversation about the appointments of the initial members to the civilian review board. And so what we are sort of envisioning and what we have proposed is that, is that when the call for civilian review members goes out, that then the members of this task force, along with the police and representatives from the police union, would be part of interviewing potential candidates. And that this body, and I'm talking this body, the tasks, that we would bring those recommendations then forward to city council. So that, you know, our subcommittee members felt it was really important that we continue our work and assistance to the city to move this forward. So that was an interesting recommendation that we came up with, I thought.
A question kind of and a concern at the same time. Well, when you talk about how often you meet, I understand that this will be on a as-needed basis. I think that's kind of the, the feeling that I'm getting if there's a complaint. Hopefully, in a perfect world, you don't have any. And however, it's hard to keep committees together when you do that. And that's my concern, that if you only meet sporadically, it's hard to say, well, now we have to contact people. How do we get them to, how do we get them to get together to get a quorum and do those things? So I, you know, I don't know if there's a, I don't want to make more work for anybody, but you know, that's some, one of the things that I do. But there are maybe other tasks, other tasks that a committee can do. And that's staying up with what other communities are doing. And one of the things that is hard to do sometimes is you reviewed, you visited Aurora's ordinance, you visit other communities, and I know of some civilian review boards that failed, that were started and they didn't get completed and they didn't fulfill their task. And I think that's important. That's how you learn from, you learn from other people's failures as well. So I think it's important that you keep a kind of a feel on what's going on around the country with other, with other review boards and with other disciplinary type things. I think that's, I think that's important.
Absolutely. And as we were talking about this, again, in our subcommittee, again, envisioning that probably the first six months of the task force's existence or maybe leading up to, people are selected and they become members of these, of the civilian review board, not the task, the civilian review board, that there's a whole lot of training that needs to go on. And there's a whole lot of activities that need to be going on in addition to looking, before you even ready to look at a potential complaint. So, yeah, we, we discussed those kinds of things in great detail during our meetings.
Yeah, and some of, you know, when we have reviewed those complaints, some of those complaints that are filed don't end up with any foundation. But I think it's important that you review that and say, hey, we agree that there's, from what the information we have, that there's nothing that happened here. One last thing is that over the course of tonight, you realize that some of these things are going to be intergovernmental. And you're talking about, we can't tell U-46 what to do. They're going to make their own mind up. Subpoena power may go, I don't believe that Elgin Police Department would be going out to, to bring somebody back if they need to go on, under subpoena. Chief and I talked about that. You don't have to subpoena the Elgin Police Department. You know, if somebody needs, if you need a witness and they're a police officer, Chief Lally will tell them, you'll be there at seven o'clock. And that's so, it's, these are people that subpoenas would be outside of the police department. They'd be witnesses or people that had, feel that they had been wrong, those types of things. So and that's what gets to be a little bit tricky, how that happens. So anyway, one thing before we leave, you know, and before, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that this has to go back through, a lot of these things, there are some legal issues here.
So promise me it won't get buried in legal and never see the light of day.
I, you know, Bill, he's not going to bury anything. He's going to get this done. We'll get it, we'll get it done. But there are some things that have to, have to be, have to be addressed. So, okay, any more questions for Ms. Hayden?
I just have, these are my thoughts on the civilian review board, and they're very mixed. In making my decision, if I could understand what exactly our chief or police, our, our chief of police or future chiefs are going, are doing that is causing a creation of this new civilian review board, that would certainly help me understand this. The task force discussions is typically usually reference things about something that happened 10, 20-plus years ago. Okay? I have concerns about a civilian review board being given input on discipline of officers, and I can't entirely agree with eliminating traffic stops for what could be considered minor violations. We're talking about people's careers and reputations, not to mention our city's own reputation as well. There are 18,000 police departments in this country, and only 162 of them have civilian review boards. Okay? So again, there are 18,000 police departments in this country, and only 162 of them have a civilian review board. If I didn't know any better, I would be running away from Elgin. On the traffic stops, the police department receives grant funding from IDOT for DUI enforcement, for speeding, distracted driving. These are the same grants that have come before the council for many years. I sincerely, I sincerely commend the task force for all the time and effort they have contributed to this process, but I respectfully disagree with some of your recommendations. And I would be missing out an opportunity to mention that the time and effort that was required of our police department and Chief Lally in participating in this 10-month, $500,000-plus process could have taken away an opportunity to implement improvements in training in our police department. Our police department, that is well-respected, not only in our community, but at a national level. Thank you.
Anything else for Ms. Hayden? Mr. Dixon.
My question, thank you, Denise, and thank you to all the task members for sticking up, staying, staying around, I'm sorry, this, this evening. My question's actually for the chief. The councilwoman brought up the chief and future chiefs, and I just have a question for you. In your, you also made recommendations based on these recommendations, or will be, you know. The civilian, the civilian review board is one of those. What is your stance on the civilian review board?
So when I gave my response on August 8th to the task force, so first and foremost, the civilian review board in terms of the review board having the final say in discipline, I do not agree with. Having the civilian review board provide input or, you know, giving their opinion before discipline is warranted, that I would be, that I could agree with. And again, ultimately, the decision of discipline has to lie with the police chief and then with the city manager and corporation council, to the legal department. So my conversations during the subcommittee meetings were just explaining some of the processes of getting that information to the review board, making sure that, you know, if there were questions, that I would be more than willing to go in front of the review board and give them an explanation as to why I made a decision. If they made a recommendation, my recommendation was different. I fully expect people to have questions for me, and I have no problem answering them. I will say, some of our conversations too centered upon, when you say civilian review board, those type of groups are usually formed through some type of consent decree, or there's some issues in the police department. So I think we have to be careful as a city as to why we're doing this. If it's to continue to operate in the spirit of transparency and accountability, every police department, any police department especially today should embrace that. I think the Elgin Police Department, we fully embrace transparency, accountability. But I think it's the messaging that we also have to make sure is appropriate, which is some of my conversation centered upon, there are things that legally, I'm not an attorney, that's, you know, corporation council, Bill Cogli's expertise. Legally, there's things that would have to be looked at. I don't know if they're even lawful. I made a point to mention that the union absolutely has to be involved in this conversation. I think it's, if we want something to succeed as a city and, and working together, and if this, bringing the police department together with our community, you have to work together. And that means everyone's voice has to be heard. So having them involved in the process of selecting people, working through whatever contract issues that we have to work through, that's important to me. Their voice has to be heard. So civilian review board, we don't have that many complaints, I want to mention, as an organization. Vast majority of our complaints are internally generated. We don't have that many external complaints. So do we need it? If it's because we want the accountability and transparency and we feel that community members are asking for that, then I understand that. And when we move forward, we should move forward together. It should be done in an appropriate way. But ultimately, any decisions on discipline has to lie with the police chief. So that were my, those were my thoughts. But it was a great discussion with the, with the task force members. I think they were very open to hearing some of my concerns and, you know, being able to, whether we, you know, modify some of their suggestions during the comments that I made, that's for them to, to decide. But ultimately, I think if this is what the council's choosing to do, there's just some things that I think you guys, you know, should be aware of, and those were the things that I talked about.
And so if I was to just summarize what you're saying, for lack of a better name, you're okay with the CRB, but you don't agree with all of the details being recommended?
Yeah, correct. I, I would say that the Elgin Police Department, if the, and let me, let me like make sure people understand this. If the purpose of accountability and transparency is why we're creating a civilian review board, I understand that, the accountability, the transparency. Do I think it's needed? No. Do I think if it's in terms of accountability and transparency and this is what the community's asking for, then yes, then I understand it. You have to be careful when you say that a police department has a civilian review board because it gives a very negative connotation to both the community and police officers who are trying to come here because they're going to say, what is going on? There's a police task force, there's a civilian review board, is that someplace that I want to be involved? So if you just hear those snippets, people may have that impression. But clearly, this has been a 10-month conversation. There's a lot of good things that came from the conversation, so it's not just those snippets. So if we choose to do this for the purpose of enhancing transparency and accountability and making sure that people have a voice, then I understand that and I would, and I agree with that. Some details of it, we have to work out, right? The legalities, whether or not, you know, contract. But I would also just stress, have the police officers involved with the community if and when we do this. I will tell you that good things happen when people work together, not when there's fighting, arguing. I mean, no good comes from that. So I want to be very clear about my position because I also don't want the city of Elgin to have a bad reputation. And I don't want the police department to have a bad reputation because there's a civilian review board and there's a police task force. Because that does affect people coming here. And I don't want it to affect it because it's a great department with great people and it's a great city with great community members. And I think we have to be very open about what we want, why we want it, and how we're going to do it.
Thank you. May down here. Mr. Good, Mr. Goodhead has handed.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we've seen and as you just pointed out, the majority of the complaints are internal. Have you ever had an instance where an internal complaint came forward and you were like, I wish that would have happened sooner? Or wish it would have been reported sooner?
That's, no. I mean, the complaints that come internally, it's an, somebody does an action and then we have to respond.
Okay. I guess I kind of framed that as like a two-parter because my follow-up to it was that maybe there's a potential for this, as you're saying, the framing and intentions of it being square, that this would help individuals within the department feel comfortable that the community has their back coming forward when they see something that they don't think is proper. Do you think that there's any possibility for this group to have that kind of effect on the department?
So can you repeat that? The effect is that the officers feel that the community is supportive of that?
If we were to establish this board and we're seeing that the majority of the complaints are internal, I'm assuming there's a culture within the department that they feel comfortable coming forward and filing a complaint to begin with, which is largely due to how you run the department. I guess my question to you is you foresee if we were to execute this in a way where it's, hey, we're trying to improve relations not only between police and the community, but even internally within a police department. Do you see if there's an opportunity for this review board to, I guess, make officers feel that the community has their back when they're coming forward to make a complaint?
I would say that, and again, it's important, the, the framing of why we're doing this because police officers inherently, and that was part of my response to the task force, you know, if you select people who are, you know, to, they, they love the police, everything we do is right. Well, every decision that's made is always going to have a question behind it. And if you pick on the opposite side where everything the police do is wrong, then it becomes an opportunity for, in some police officer's mind and ability for retribution. I just don't like the police. I'm going to get on this civilian review board and I'm always going to have an issue. So the balance, you need them in the middle. And so if the police officers are involved in the conversation, selecting the members, understanding the process, I think that's, those are the steps that need to be taken for there to be the trust building that people in the community are looking for. Accountability, transparency, checks and balances, we, I understand that. Any police department should have that, and it should be something that we constantly are striving for. And every police, they, they understand that. They may not like it sometimes because it brings up questions or issues, but they understand it. So if this is something that we need to do, the council chooses to do this, then I would just ask that it's done in a way that's collaboration together. And I think that, and again, you know, I want to stress, if it's under the premise of accountability, transparency, and enhancing it, and that's why we're doing this, that message needs to be clear. Because otherwise, people will say, you don't need this. You have not, you don't have that many complaints. It leaves a very bad connotation, negative taste in people's mouths of, why does that police department have a civilian review board? What is going on there? And then it will be hard to recruit people and retain people. So we just have to be clear about why we're doing it and what do people want? And if we're going to do it, do it together.
Thank you. Appreciate everything in this additional clarity.
Ms. Martinez.
Just a quick question, Chief. Just to give perspective, how many are internal complaints and how many are external?
Just off the top of my head, this year, we're at 26 total complaints, and I believe it might be split, it might be half and half this year. Last year, I think we were at 32 total complaints, and I believe 12 were external, the rest were internal. You can go on our transparency site, it's there too, but that's just off the top of my head. So a vast majority are usually internally generated. There have been some years where the external, it's maybe one or two over the internal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Powell.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And thanking the task force, I also want to take the opportunity to thank Chief Lally and Deputy Chief Schusler for attending not only all of the task force meetings, but all of the subcommittee meetings, thanking the officers that participated in the group sessions. Those were really powerful, and I thought they were very productive for all of us who participated. Your presence and your input during and throughout this whole process can't be understated. I've, I've heard different things in, you know, in terms of the task force isn't including the police department. That's not true. You guys were always there, even when Deputy Chief Schusler was probably in pain from his, his shoulder injury. But again, all of you, I mean, your, your input, your, your time, this was important. And everything that you provided during those sessions was important. So I want to make sure that that is acknowledged publicly. I truly appreciate it, and I'm quite sure that everyone that was on the task force appreciated it and got something out of it. I also want to note, in particular with the civilian review board, this is also something that Chief Lally, Councilman Dixon, myself, former- former Deputy Chief Flurry, and Bob Witt in your police department actually worked on, goodness, for probably well over a year, on and off, kind of putting together a framework. But again, as we kind of got to the end of that, and it became apparent that we were going to have a, a task force, we thought, you know, rather than just kind of pushing that through, let's have the task force have some input on that and add their stamp to it. So, I'm pleased to see the, what they did with it. A lot of what we've worked on is still intact with some tweaks here and there. But I think it was important to get that community input, which was obviously the whole point of having the task force in the first place. To some of the things that you addressed or had concerns about, Chief, regarding perceptions of officers, potential officers, people in the community, potential community members, about why do we have a task force? Why are we looking at putting, creating a civilian review board? I think rather than folks looking at it negatively as, "Oh, there's something wrong with our police department," I really think people should look at it as us being progressive and proactive about the work that is being done in this community and how we police in this community. We've taken a lot of pride, as we should, in a lot of the police work that we've done in this community. Our community policing program is second to none. And I've, I've sat here plenty of times and talked about some of my favorite parts of, of our community policing program. Our rope program, our summer program with our officers, our Kids United program. I think that all of those are key in building community and trust and relationships between our police department and our community. So, I really see the civilian review board as a continuation of our community policing program. Really kind of bringing community policing full circle, closing the loop. I'm, I'm an environmentalist by, by trade. So, when you talk about recycling, you talk about closing the loop. You put the recycling in the recycling bin, and, and closing the loop is making sure that that can or that bottle, at the end of the day, is made into a new can or bottle. I look at the civilian review board as closing the loop in our community policing program. Right now, we have a lot of external input, a, a lot of work from the police department coming out into the community, but we don't have that community input and influence coming back into our police department. And the community having a say in how they want to be policed in this community. Because despite what some people may feel or believe, the data is the data. When we look at our data, there are certain members of our community that feel that they are being overpoliced and that there's bias. And the data, quite frankly, supports that. So, when we've sat here, year after year, and heard people come here to our city council meetings and complain about that, we have to take that seriously. And if we're going to be the state-of-the-art police department that I know we can be, then we have to fix that portion of it. Because I want everyone to feel the same way that some of my colleagues do, that, "Hey, I don't have a problem with the police department." I want everyone in our community to feel like they're being treated fairly and that they're not being targeted. Because it's not just what happened 10, 15 years ago. These are things that are still happening today. So, I just want to clarify that for people. We didn't go through all this for nothing. You didn't give up your time. Deputy Chief Schusler didn't give up his time. The task force didn't give up their time over the past nine months or more for something that doesn't exist, for problems that don't exist. And I don't think that's a negative thing against our, about, that should count against our department. I think us being transparent, again, a word that we like to throw around a lot, and acknowledging, "Hey, these are where we still have challenges," make us better. And I want us to be better. I celebrate all of the things that we've done that are great. We, and I've named them all, you know, before. We are cutting-edge, and I know we will continue to be cutting-edge. But we gotta hone in on some of these things that are still very much a concern to folks in this community, to a certain segment of our community. So, that's what I, I wanted to say, and I, I wanted to acknowledge the work, the groundwork that had been laid for the civilian review board, in particular prior to getting to the task force. So, thank you.
And, and just real quick to respond to that as well. I think, you know, the task force in itself, the most productive part, and I've said it several times, and I will continue to say it, the most productive part of the task force, in my opinion, was not when we were talking and digging through stats and, you know, I mean, that's part of it, and you need to do that. But that doesn't fix what you're talking about. And I said that from day one. What fixes what, what, what people in the community and the segment that you're speaking of, it's a perception, it's a feeling, right? Sometimes, you know, a traffic stop is conducted, and it's done lawfully and proper, and, and everything is on the up and up, but someone still has a feeling, a sentiment. So, the conversations with the police officers, and I think working with the task force members and them getting to talk to me and Deputy Chief Schusler, and especially, and, and I'll be very frank about it, especially when the facilitators were not present. It was a, that is how I feel that we accomplished a lot. And I sat through all the meetings with the police officers and, you know, meeting the task force members, and I appreciate every single one of them. I thank them for their time and for their work. We never looked at this as a hostile encounter. We never looked at this as, you know, that's not what we do there. But I just think it's important that we understand what you're saying. There are certain things that we're going to always continue to work on, but it's going to take time. I mean, this is, there's a lot of things that came up in these conversations that you're, you are, some things you were talk, we were talking about things from 15, 20 years ago. And because it's never been talked about, people never get in a room with each other, say their perceptions. We can agree to disagree. We, we probably do it a lot, you know, and sometimes we don't. But I think that just when we move forward, however we do this, you know, the divisiveness, arguing, it causes a lot of stress for police officers. It causes a lot of stress for community members who, you know, they're taking their time too. I think we just, as we move forward with some of the recommendations, we do it collectively in the spirit of cooperation, in the spirit of really making a difference. And, and that's where having those conversations and relationships with the police officers, that's why it was so important to me that people met them. Not just me and Deputy Chief Schusler, meet the people in the building and get to know who they are. Get to know their hearts, get to know their minds, get to know them past the uniform. That's how things are going to happen. And so, I would just ask, whatever we choose to do in the end, we do it together in the spirit of, you know, laying the foundation for the future.
Is there anything further you need, would like to add?
I'm sorry, we do have another set of recommendations that fell outside of the subcommittees. But we felt they, they were of importance as well. The first one is the cooperation with School U46. As you said, we can't tell them what to do, but we want to partner with them regarding face law and errand law, to not have it presented when there's an incident, but have it presented to every single child in U46. This is an effort to create an environment, a place where children can feel comfortable in the event that the offender is someone that should be someone that protects them. The second recommendation is to maintain the existing program for the community and develop two more programs. So, this is to reach out to the Laotian community, as well as Spanish-American community, to establish that, give them a resource regarding the Elgin Police Department. And then the Elgin Police Department Development Program, membership of elementary age. This is for kids, the, to create a body amongst themselves, an entity of themselves, of their peers, where they come and they, they can feel comfortable with the, getting to know the Elgin Police Department to help foster that relationship. The next recommendation is in the website. We've heard that some of the community members feel that it's kind of, for lack of a better term, clunky. It's not really user-friendly. I mean, we want to invest in that to make it more user-friendly, to make it more viable for what someone needs when they're looking for, for certain things. We felt that there was some space there to make some advantages. I think there is an app that's in the process, so maybe that can, we can partner with that. The app that, that is being developed to help that further along. To adjust to the job description of the every school resource officer, the SO officer employed by the department to work alongside the administrator for, in an effort to not have students feel threatened by a SRO. Whereas there's someone that's there as a resource, someone that's there to protect them, someone that's there to keep them safe while they're at school. The next recommendation is for a third party, or even to look into the, maybe find the resource in the Elgin Police Department for cold cases. Some of the community feels that some of the cold cases from 20, 25, 30 years ago are predominantly of people of color. So, they, they feel that it's a disadvantage, because some of the cold cases aren't looked at. So, we would like to do an analysis if that's, can be done in-house, or we need to outsource with a third party. And the next recommendation is all eligible residents. Oh, this is for the, to divert, the pre-arrest diversion program, to develop that here as well in Elgin. So, we feel that some of the cases aren't criminal. They could be mental health cases, and we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to find out what exactly is the, so, the issue at hand, rather than just make it criminal. The Elgin Police Department should participate in training surrounding the LGBT community, individuals with HIV or the communicative diseases, as well as undocumented, I'm sorry, immigrants. This is to create a platform where those people that fall under this category aren't marginalized or felt slighted because of their orientation. Then, the public engagement. Well, that's the end of the, the, of the recommendations. Are there any questions from those recommendations? In regards to our public engagement, as we said, we did have the two community listening sessions where we heard from the community. It provided the public with an opportunity to come in, to look at the recommendations and give their feedback. I think both community sessions were a success. I think we got valuable feedback from the community in regards to the task force, the work that we were doing, as well as some of the recommendations that we made. I think it was a learning process for the community, as well as the task force as a whole, hearing from the community about things that they were being affected by. And then lastly, I, I want to start by saying that this was a, a long journey. We, as a task force, we came together, 18 different people, 18, 18 different backgrounds, 18 different points of views. And I would be the first to say that we got off to a rather rough start. But over time, we did find our way, and we did get momentum. And there was a lot of things, I think a lot of good things that came out of the, the time that was spent. I know it was a lot of money that was spent. I know it was a lot of time that was spent. But I think if we really look at the, the benefits that we got from completing this task force, doing these things, hearing from the community, working with the police chief, as, as well as Adam, I think a lot, the benefit outweighs the investment. And that's just me personally. We want to thank the Elgin Police, Chief Lally and her staff, including officers, who participated, participated in the dialogues. I was able to complete, participate. And one of the sessions, and it was really good to see them as individuals and not see them as police officers. And it was a hope that we, they saw us as, you know, individuals and not just offenders. The City of Elgin staff, Rick Cozel, he did a great job of being here. He helped with this, this PowerPoint, keeping currents in Western check at times. So, we want to thank him for the, the efforts that he put in. Molly Gillespie, the AV, she's back there now. She had to put up with us in all the task force meetings, even the ones that were virtual. So, we thank her for her efforts. Living Gospel Church, Pastor Blalock, he was willing to open up his church for one of the community listening sessions. The Gail Borden Public Library, as well for the second community session. Tish was a major part of that. She was not able to be here tonight due to other commitments, but we, we thanked them for that. On the community members and listening sessions and commitment and task force, you know, of course, we started on Zoom, so we were able to utilize that platform in the beginning. I think it had some challenges itself, but we overcame those as well. So, with that, those are the recommendations. And I would also like to say that there's, you know, there's a perception that, as we said numerous times tonight, that the task force was to say, "Hey, you're doing something wrong." But the task force would not develop to say, "Hey, you're doing something wrong." It's to say, "You are doing a lot of things right, but can we be better? Can we strive for excellence? Can we be the model police force that does have a citizen review board?" But it's not, it's not because it's a bad thing. We worked, me and my, as well as my task force members, we worked hard on this. I mean, we did this out of wanting to see Elgin be a better Elgin. We weren't paid for it. Our time was volunteer time. And we did that with the hopes of making Elgin a better Elgin, not to say the police force is a bad police force, or they need so much help that a citizen review board should be established. With that, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to elaborate on what you're saying. You know, I, I truly do commend the task force. You started out with 18, and you ended up really with 11. And for you to do it free, that really shows your true commitment to the city. I'm not disputing it at all. What I'm disputing is the fact that we hired these facilitators that were really bad. Nothing against you guys. You can tell. It's proof. Once things moved on a little bit, a lot of things were said and done, and that's good. Having a task force is not a bad thing. I'm not saying that. A civilian review board? Now, that's a little different. I am saying that, okay? I just wanted to clarify too, when you talk about the LGBTQIA+ community and how the police department should participate in training surrounding this, I just want to make note that the police department just won a national award for, for what they do with this community. And that's a big plus, because not all police departments can say that. The undocumented immigrant community, you know, I, I'm not speaking for, for anybody, but, you know, normally, if they see the police, they run the other way, you know? That's how it was for many years. I know for a fact that it isn't that way, because Elgin is a good community. It's a welcoming community, you know? And we had classes with the community stating, you know, "These are things that the police department can ask you." They can ask you for your driver's license. They can ask you for your insurance card. But they can't ask you if you're undocumented or not, and I think that needs to be clarified. And I think that a city the size of Elgin of 116,000, I, I went to both sessions that you had for the community. I went to both um um sessions that you had for the community and, you know, I I agree. Arguing is not good. You know, you don't accomplish anything. You're just trying to figure out who's right, who's wrong. But discussions are very good, and I think good discussions came out of this task force. I do. I wish more people would have participated in these sessions that we had with the community because for a city that size, it's just a shame that more people weren't involved. Okay? Thank you.
Um a few a few wrap-up points I want to make um in in terms of how we move forward. First, the the mayor um brought up some, I thought, some very important points about uh the civilian review board and making sure that if if we go down that that path, which I hope we do, um keeping those folks engaged and not kind of meeting on an as-needed basis because you're probably going to lose people. But there was a lot of discussion in the details of the report and the the recommendations around other duties that that civilian review board would have outside of just reviewing complaints. And I think that that would definitely keep people busy, um continue a lot of the work of the task force that maybe they didn't get a chance to get to, um and, you know, warrant them being able to meet on a on a more regular basis. So I I just wanted to point that out as a way to kind of deal with what you had mentioned. There's a whole host of the recommendations, as you saw, that were related to things outside of our jurisdiction. They're more related to maybe schools and our educational system. I do want to report um that recently the U forty-six School Board um made some very significant changes to their SRO program. They are no longer issuing tickets. They revised their um student code of conduct. That police are no longer involved in truancy, and they're no longer issuing tickets to students. So I I credit them for taking that step. And I credit people in this community, the task force, folks here on this dais for making noise over the past couple of years about the data and the numbers and what we saw that we didn't like that was going on in our community and with our students because these are the future people, the future leaders in our community. So thank you to U forty-six for making those changes. That's very new. That was something that recently took place at uh their meetings over the past couple of weeks. There were some recommendations regarding Fates Law and Aaron's Law. That's actually something that's already incorporated into their curriculum. I checked with their board. So that's, you know, it's great that we're identifying things that there that are already being done. Probably the other note I want to make is early on when we were putting together the the task force, um we had hoped and planned that we would have the information or the report for the Center of Police Center for Policing Equity to help guide our decisions and help guide some of the work that um is was being done with the task force. So um I I want to ask staff to provide us with an update on where we are with that uh because I think before we move forward with some of this, I think it's important that we have that information to help strengthen um further, you know, strengthening a lot of the recommendations and help justify uh some of the actions that we're taking. So City Manager Cozel.
Uh thank you, Councilmember Powell. Um just yesterday, Chief Lally provided me with the latest update on the on her work with the center, well, the city's work with the Center for Policing Equity. Um she met with CPE on September eighth for what they believe to be the final meeting, awaiting the final realization of the report from the CPE, and she was advised that by September ninth, um oh, wait, she was advised on September ninth, their editorial director was out of the office until this week, and she would hear from CPE sometime this week. So once that happens, we'll come to agreement on that. We'll be making arrangements to present those findings to the city.
Okay. And if you can, I I guess one of the things I would like to see is um I would like to invite the Center for Policing Equity to come and do a presentation on their findings because it obviously this has taken a while, and I know there's been back and forth regarding interpretation of some of the data. So I think um it would be important for um an agency or an an organization that does this work all across the country that we've invested so much time and energy with and trusting them uh to give us um independent feedback, whether they present via Zoom or come in person, um I would request that um as we look at this report that we have them do a presentation to the council. The final part of of my statements regarding um the recommendations that have been made by the task force, I think obviously there's a lot, a lot for us to absorb as a council, but I think if we kind of take this in bits and pieces and parts, um obviously maybe looking at it by subcommittee and bringing back uh and grouping these by subcommittee and bringing them back for further discussion and, you know, some things may be a no-brainer, you know, in terms of saying, hey, this makes sense, not a whole lot of further um legal review or what have you would have to be done to, you know, implement some of these things. Those are things that we can kind of quickly move forward. Obviously, as has been stated, some of the um some of the recommendations require a lot more in-depth research, legal review, um or were things that the police department had some had some concerns and issues with. So if if we can, you know, kind of work with staff to um come up with, you know, putting maybe one of these on the agenda for further discussion over the next couple of months um so that we can kind of digest this. But um I would but but before we do that, I I really think we need to hear from the Center for Policing Equity uh before we make any real recommendations. Thank you.
Just just a few comments for myself. Going going back, I guess, to the whole start of this, I guess, in the back of my mind, you know, the whole the whole reason why I I supported forming or being a part of this was um I did want to dig into understanding, you know, are there biases that our police department has? Are we treating people differently based on different attributes of of a person, how they look, what have you? Part of my, I guess, my disappointment in in how the whole thing kind of came out, I I didn't feel like we dug in as much into that specific area as we could have. Felt like we covered on some a lot of other topics, maybe, that were either, A, they were issues or topics that were kind of in the pipeline already, but that was really the heart of it. I really wanted to understand, like, what current things is the police department doing right now that that is impacting people dis with with disparately, you know? And I'm not sure that we got to true actions. Like, for example, a citizens review board, I I don't understand how that changes what's happening on on the street if these things are currently happening. And then and and I think it'll be interesting as we do dig into more of the data to understand what the data really does say. You know, just like when we looked at some of the data in the past about even school, you know, outcomes in our community that are broken down by by racial lines, there's there's more to it than just that. There's there's more in there's more things that impact, you know, our community than just the color of someone's skin. There's other factors that that cause outcomes in people's lives that are different. And I think we just need to all be open and honest about those when we when we have those conversations. What I would say is this, though. Uh the the piece that I enjoyed the most was getting to know some of the folks on the task force. There's some there's some good folks that were that were on there and just getting to know them. And uh and I've encouraged some of them to continue to be involved in in different ways and in other ways because I think that they can provide additional value ongoing. There's some good folks. Did I think everyone on the task force was a good folk? Maybe not, but I think the good folks lasted. The good folks lasted. Yeah, I think I I'm I'm one of the things that we talked about as we were walking through some of the recommendations at the end was as we kind of go through this, we need to be really careful that we need to be clear on what problem we're trying to solve when we put through a a change. The other thing that 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 I would say too is there's a there's a number of recommendations that I would be cautionary as far as trying to put into true policy. There's a lot of operational type things like, well, we recommend that we do this training. Well, do I really want to put that into an ordinance per se? I I kind of feel like that's almost a little bit of a of an overreach. I think the chief heard a lot of things, and I think she was in agreement with a lot of things like, yeah, that makes sense. I don't need ordinances to do that. That's my job. I implement those things. And so I think we kind of have to balance that out too as we go through the recommendations and kind of filter them out to say, okay, which ones are true policy things that we need to put through, like a formal ordinance process and legal review process, and which ones are just operational things that, you know, the the chief can work through? Because a lot of the the things that I think were recommendations for some of those kind of operational things, they're already doing. It's just additional tweaks or different things. And and at some point, I do have to be honest with you, there's a there's a balance. We can only train our our police officers so much because at some point they they do need to do, they actually have to put their training into execution too. So we have to be careful, you know, how much training we do. And and I think that's also goes back to some of the conversations we had throughout the task force that, you know, Elgin's pretty progressive already with the amount of training they do compared to many other departments. And I think state law is now trying to catch up with that to 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 even that out. Couple of other thoughts, I guess I just have is is, you know, uh we talk about the citizens review board, and I think we're going to have to continue to have conversations around that specific topic. One of the things that I've brought up in the past and it's come up in different conversations is that at the end of the day, you know, we as elected officials are citizens of Elgin, and we are also here to represent Elgin as citizens. And so in the in a way, some, you know, if we look at the citizens review board as something so critical of holding our our chief accountable and disciplinary measure measures, you know, is it something is it a role that we should take on ourselves? The the process that scares me the most about a citizens review board is not the function of the citizens review board, but but the appointment process of a citizens review board, to be honest with you. Good peop- good people that have a a pure heart can probably, you know, can can do good things. Not the right people with not the right heart can do not good things. And not to say that that, you know, I I I'm the first to admit that I'm not a perfect person by any stretch of the imagination. I think everyone gets to watch us and picks out our flaws, and it's easy to pick out our flaws, and they probably have lists for each one of us of our flaws, and that's understandable. I understand. I I'm not perfect. At the same time, though, um we are held to a little bit of a different standard as elected officials, as citizens that have been elected to represent our community, and there is a little bit of a additional measure that we have because of that, um just in the position that we have. And so I I throw that out there as we kind of work through this because I I do see my role, you know, if there is an issue that I see with the police department in some sort of disciplinary measure, you know, like I said, those are things that I I I talk about regularly with with the with the city manager when I have my one-on-one. So it's I'm already kind of doing that in a way of, hey, what's going on? Like, what is this? What is what are the background of this? You know, what what are we going to to propose in this situation? So those are conversations that that I have already, and I would assume most of us up here do as well, um because that's just a part of the role as well. So even if there's a citizens review board, there's still a role that I have to play as an elected official as well. I'll keep it, I'll I'll probably end my statements there. I think there's a lot more that we're going to dig into over time. This has this has been an interesting process, like I said, through, I think everyone would feel that they would, I think everyone could go back and rewrite the script to to have gone better. It's, hey, we should have done this differently, and I I I think everyone probably going to feel that. Like I said, I will I will end on the positive. I go back to the people that we had on here that are still here tonight, uh some good folks. And so I do thank you for your time and your feedback, and I agree, like, it's the conversations that we have uh that really change things. It's the conversations. And so how do we, you know, continue to, you know, continue to do that? And that's why I really appreciate what the chief does with our our community model of our police officers are in our communities. They're talking to people every day. They're continuing to win more and more people's hearts and minds over uh just by those conversations. And so we continue to do that. You know, it it continues to change the momentum. You know, what we we're on the right trajectory, and so I just I'm I'm cautious to say, let's not pull too many levers at once because I feel we're on the right track. And so that's where I guess I kind of go back to the making sure we've got the right the right motive before making some of these changes because, you know, things that we talked about, that I think were brought up about, hey, well, this did happen twenty years ago, this happened fifteen years ago, those things, I I think we can all agree that those situations are happening less and less and less. At least that that's my understanding. At least that's my 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 perception. I'll go back and check that again with people when we look at the data. And and so I think things are improving. And so I always want to be cautious that we don't upend that 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 track of improvement as well.
Okay, it's been a long day, and I want to thank everybody for being, nope, we have to end. People got to go home, and they got to go to work tomorrow. And uh it's been a long day. I want to thank everybody. The work's not done. Obviously, you're hearing this from just about everybody. We have a lot of things to do. And uh I don't know how we're going to go about that, but we'll have to work on this. The Ms. Powell's approach is looking at task forces, but we'll have some internal or your working groups and have some internal conversations. And I think one last thought, maybe civilian review board is not the proper name for it. If that's going to cause a problem externally and feel like that's not something that's appropriate, maybe we need to look at something different, but that'll give us all something to work on. Uh thank you all again for being here. An announcement from the council. Ms. Powell.
Yes, uh it was a busy, busy weekend in Elgin this past weekend, and I just want to uh just acknowledge some of the activities that went on and all the folks that were involved with um yet another very successful historic house walk this weekend. Thanks to all of the folks that are involved with putting that on. Uh the homes obviously are beautiful. Uh many of us serve as docents, and it's always um really exciting to me to talk to people that are coming through those homes. And there are so many people that are from Elgin, but also a whole lot of people that are coming from outside of our community, and we our community is on uh grand display for visitors to our community. So thanks to um all of the folks that are involved with the historic house walk. Uh Fringe Fest was this weekend, so thanks to the uh members of the Cultural Arts Commission, Side Street Studio Arts, and uh bringing folks from all over, actually, the world to participate in Fringe Festival. Also, thanks to our Parks Foundation Board for another successful uh youth scholarship fund fundraiser at Bowles Creek with the annual Brew Fest, uh with the Craft Brew Festival uh that raises money for our youth uh sports scholarships. And I know I'm probably missing some activities that were taking place over the weekend, but those were three in particular that I had a chance to participate in. Well, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to do Fringe Fest, but um again, Elgin is alive and vibrant, and we are drawing people from all over to our community, and that was on full display in particular this weekend. So thank you to everyone involved.
Ms. Martinez.
Agreed with what um Councilwoman Tish is saying, Councilwoman Powell. Two weeks ago before, right after we had our last meeting, there also was a a creative group that did the um museum crawl, and I want to um say thank you to that group because it also um enabled U forty-six to work with the museums. And, you know, it's not every place that has a planetarium, and we do. The museums that we have, we have three. And um I think I'm I'm probably underestimating, but there was at least four hundred people that attended to that. So thank you very much.
I have an announcement. Uh this is for, you know, the people that can't afford health care. Uh there's going to be an event on October eighth and ninth at Judson University's Fitness Center. It's called Heal Elgin Day, and there will be a professional people out there to do free dental care, free eyeglass, uh free eyeglasses, free vision checks, free general health checks, free pediatric checks for anybody who walks in. Uh last year, we did about four hundred people. We expect it to be more this year. It's going to be focused strictly on health care, uh no cost to anybody, and uh I think it's a great a great opportunity, especially for people that have young children. Get them out there, and if you can't afford to get them to a doctor, get them out there now and you get this done free, and if anybody has any serious conditions, there are professional doctors that are there right now. I know that they pull teeth when you're out there. They can do those kind of things and do fillings. Yeah, well, yeah, and it's getting late. Yeah, but anyway, you can get these things done for free, and I think that's an important thing for the good of the community. Their website's healelgin.org, really easy to find.
Mayor, I'd like to announce my retirement from community activism. I'd like to say, seriously, I'd like to say that if anybody having a problem do not see me, thank you all for allowing me to come on this task force. I would not be on any other task force, anything like this. If you need some spiritual counseling, spiritual advice, come and see me, because I'm getting back into my role as spiritual leader, not black leader, not people leader. So if you need any spiritual counseling, come and see me. This is my, thank you all for letting me serve. I would not do this again, but thank you all for the time.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
From staff.
Really quick, Councilmember Powell, the Bears don't play till later in the evening, so on Sunday afternoon, Inspired Elgin, chamber music on the Fox, teaming up with the City of Elgin and the Segal Foundation to bring another fun, free, family-friendly event to celebrate arts in Elgin. It takes place on Sunday afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00, free concert at 3:00 o'clock. Go to the city's website, scroll down to latest news, you'll get all the information you need. That's it, thanks.
Entertainer motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Second to adjourn. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon? Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seton?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned.